We can get started. Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today's Tuesday, May 6, 2025, and this is our 7:00 PM special meeting. For anyone who needs them, please be advised that there are assisted listening devices on the back at the table of the room. And Madam Cook, can you please call the wall?
Yes, Councilmember G. Here. Councilmember Hoxey. Here. Councilmember Riley. Vice Mayor Iverson. Here. And Mayor Mulcany. Here. Thank you. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is our adoption of the agenda and one suggestion, because I know we may have had we had some public comment that item H3 was at the end of the agenda and could be brought to the beginning or could be brought up in our policy matters. And so I don't know if we want to consider that. Do we have, I don't see anyone here to comment on that item though.
Mayor, does he have one person?
Oh, we do. Okay. Okay. And do we have any other? So that's, that's a proposed, do we want to make a change on that?
So I, I think the thought was if the council was interested in moving up the discussion regarding the license plate reader cameras, we can bring that in front of the budget, maybe after the public hearing? Or do you want to bring it in front of the public hearing?
No, I wanted to bring it in front of the budget.
Okay.
That was, that would be my proposal. As long as he's here.
Well, there is, there's, I think there's one, I see one member of the public that wants to comment on the license plate reader matters?
I have a comment about, I think it's H2.
Oh, okay. So do we have, are there any, let me just ask this, are there any members of the public right now that want to comment on item H3?
I would move to changing it subject to him being here.
Okay. Maybe we can, can we revisit that? No, we have to do it now?
Right. I think you would adopt the agenda as written and then later, if you want to rearrange the H items, you can.
When we get to policy.
When you get there.
Okay. Then since we, then, then at this point, are there, I will not propose that. I'm not making that motion to change the agenda since we don't have anyone from the public here to comment on item H3. Are there any other changes to the proposed agenda by any other council members? If not, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
I'll move adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is adopted. We have a lot of items for the good of the city, which is next on our agenda. And the first is a particularly joyful item. We have recognition of Lynn Look, who has been given us 26 years of service as a children's librarian, which is just magical. And so we have a recognition for, for Ms. Lynn Look for 26 years of dedicated service. And we ask that Ms. Look and Arinda's librarian, Michael Ballard, please come up to the podium. So we can congratulate you and appreciate you. Please, please join him. And Michael, before we present the certificate of recognition, would you like to say a few words?
I would love to. Yes, please. City councilors and, and Arinda, I was not quite sure how to begin speaking about Lynn Look, youth services librarian at the Arinda Library for the past 26 years. Her impact on our branch and on our entire Contra Costa County library system has been extraordinary. And honestly, I wondered, how do you summarize someone like Lynn? How do you capture what she means to the community? Then I saw a headline in today's San Jose Mercury News that said, "Contra Costa Libraries are the lowest funded in the Bay Area. Why are they so successful?" The answer to that question, at least in part, is simple. Lynn Look. Over the years, Lynn has built a legacy of innovation, service, and compassion. She co-founded Paws to Read, an elated program where children read aloud to therapy dogs, helping nervous readers gain confidence in a safe, joyful space. She introduced toddler storytime to the entire county. She mentors new youth services librarians and new Arinda staff. She helps plan and shape our system-wide book collections. And during the COVID-19 crisis, she stepped up as an emergency worker in the county's call center. Lynn's work is steady, thoughtful, and deeply impactful, touching lives, inspiring colleagues, me, and helping shape the generations of readers. And the best part, she's not done yet. Lynn continues to be a guiding force in our library and across the county. We are incredibly fortunate to have her dedication, her insight, and her heart leading the way. Thank you, Lynn, for everything, and thank you, City Council and Arinda, for this.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to stay there. We have an actual proclamation certificate to present to you, but before, before we do that, I know we have a full agenda, but I did want to say, just really briefly, I know, you know, I, I moved here with toddlers and have been to your children's storytime and Paws to Read, and I've seen throughout the years, right, the impact. You know, there was a time where that, that library and that children's section was a real refuge for me as a mother, right, and as a parent. And I, I know that is, think of how amplified that is and how many lives you've touched. And I just want to recognize that. And I know my, my colleagues share that same experience in Arinda. So really what you've done is incredible and it's, it's truly, I think, a service of love. So thank you.
Nothing to add that was due.
And so I'd like to ask the council to join me with, for a quick picture with you while we present you a certificate of recognition.
No, it's just a certificate. It's not a.
I wasn't planning to say a word, but if you saw them, and these are, I really feel lucky to have been in Arinda. This is like one of the best places I've stayed so long.
Okay, next on items for the good of the city is we have three proclamations, and they're all very important, but because we have such a full agenda, I'm just going to read a little bit from each one. Our first item D2 is a proclamation declaring May as Wildfire Prevention Awareness Month. And so I want to recognize and proclaim May as Wildfire Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Arinda, something that I think we are very, very aware of. So, and hopefully some of you were able to witness and see, attend our first community meeting on wildfire prevention and emergency preparedness and evacuation that we held last Wednesday. And I think, you know, I, we have really in Arinda gone far and beyond, and I think our real model community in the state and what we're doing. And I want to thank our staff for how far they've taken us in doing that. But the proclamation has a few, in addition to, you know, talking a lot about the statistics and the, the need to recognize wildfire season year round, not just in May. But May is a good time for us to remember to create defensible space around our homes, remove fuel, know your evacuation routes, keep important documents in a safe way or password protected online. You know, have a household emergency plan and do all the things that we need to do to be prepared. Next on our agenda is item D3, which is a proclamation declaring May. Also, we have a couple heritage months that are celebrated in May and the first Jewish American Heritage Month. And I do want to read just a couple clauses from the proclamation. Whereas from our nation's earliest days, Jewish Americans have been an essential part of the American story, greatly contributing to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all people, even while in the face of discrimination and adversity, working tirelessly to realize their piece of the American dream with relentless spirit. And these remarkable achievements have enriched our country, stirred our conscience, and challenged us to extend the miracles of freedom and security. And as we celebrate the rich heritage of the Jewish American community in the city of Arinda and the nation, we recognize that American Jews have worked tirelessly to strengthen the promise of religious freedom and civil rights in the United States by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, teach empathy and compassion, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And through our understanding and study of the Holocaust, we know the human devastation that can come from systemic prejudice and are compelled to never forget. And during Jewish American Heritage Month, the city of Arinda celebrates the hard-fought progress won through the struggle and sacrifice of Jewish Americans. And we rededicate ourselves to building a world where diversity is cherished and faith is protected. Therefore, be it resolved that I, as mayor of Arinda, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Arinda. Next, moving on to item D4, we have another proclamation. This is declaring May also as Asian American Heritage Month. And again, I'm just going to read a little bit of this proclamation, but it's in the packet if anyone wants to read more. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen, Nakahama Manhiro, to the United States on May 7, 1843, and also the anniversary of the May 10, 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad, built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed during May to recognize the contributions and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And whereas California and particularly the Bay Area are proud to be home to a large API population that contributes greatly to the prosperity and enrichment of our country. And whereas diversity represents one of our greatest strengths, and by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of API persons, Arinda and the Bay Area celebrate the importance of inclusion to building a brighter future to all of our citizens. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, as mayor of Arinda, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Arinda. Thank you for bearing with us with those proclamations. I know they take time to read, but I think they are, they are really important. And, you know, especially in the wake of increased anti-Semitism and increased hatred in general in our community. I really appreciate you all taking the time to listen to this and that our city celebrates them. We, I think item D5 was the Arinda Association Annual Report, and my understanding is we are not going to hear that report tonight.
We are not going to hear that report tonight. One of the presenters had an unexpected issue come up and is unable to make it tonight, but they are requesting to be placed on the June 3 agenda for presentation again.
Okay. Well, we always love enjoying, we always enjoy hearing from the Arinda Association, so I think we all look forward to that presentation in June. That takes us to item D6 on our agenda, which is East Bay Municipal Utility District is going to present to us on their budget and their associated rates. Welcome. And I would like to invite East Bay MUD's Board President and Ward 3 Representative, Marguerite Young, to give a presentation to, on the budget and the associated rates.
Good evening. Sorry, it's been a really long day.
Hello, Director Young. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Good to see a couple of you twice in one, twice in one week. Yeah, I think it is. Okay. Or last week. Thank you, Mayor Mulcany, and all of the rest of the city council for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Marguerite Young. For those of you that haven't met me, although I think I've met all of you. I represent Ward 3, which hugs the watershed of East Bay MUD locally, includes Arinda, Maraga, El Sabrante, Piedmont, a big chunk of Oakland, and small parts of Pinole and Richmond, and probably two-thirds of our local watershed. I'm really glad to be back in Arinda. I think it's the heart of East Bay MUD. Our water treatment plant serves 800,000 people that's here in Arinda. And that's more than half of our total population served. As you must know, we are doing a major upgrade at the Arinda Treatment Plant. You can't miss it when you drive by. It's the largest capital investment in East Bay MUD's 102-year history. That includes Party Dam. And it's right here in our backyard. In addition to our treatment plant upgrades, we have several pipeline replacement projects, like Angorietta, which I know Councilmember G. is familiar with, must be familiar with. And other projects that are underway with more planned in '25 and '26. We're also completing construction of the Happy Valley and Sunnyside Pumping Plants this summer, which will strengthen Arinda's water supply reliability for the long term. And of course, we're continuing to manage our watershed for water quality and also fuels production and keeping with it being wildfire prevention month. We do that 12 months of the year. And tonight, we're here to provide an update on our East Bay MUD budget, which I know a couple of you heard about at the mayor's conference last week. But our, our budget and wait process, just like your budget process, is like your budget process, is, is, is going forward right now. And our budget manager, Sam Feldman, is here to give a very short presentation and then answer, we'll answer your questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Young.
Thank you. So I am going to run really quick through this because you've had it in your packet and you probably want to just ask some questions instead of hear what a couple of you have heard already. So, thank you so much. Big green button. Can't miss. So you know about East Bay MUD. In this area, we serve water, wastewater is part of our service area, on the other side of the hills. And it's a big set of infrastructure. That is the big thing we have and do and helps us deliver water from the Lower Sea of Foothills down to the East Bay. And a lot of that water, as you know, goes through our indoor water treatment plant. We, like, like all of us in the community and stewards of our public infrastructure, have challenges. It is aging. We have pipes in the ground that are over 100 years old. They're still working. Some of our newer pipes aren't. And so we have a lot of work to do in pipeline rebuild, as President Young mentioned. And we, it is a critical part of our mission and everything we do is preserving and maintaining high water quality, preserving, protecting the environment, not just for us and not just for water, but for our neighbors and our partners, and to keep this community whole. Climate change is obviously, goes into everything we do and how we plan, including how we plan for fiscal responsibility. We don't know what the future is going to look like exactly, but we know we need strong finances to make sure that we're there for us, the community. So on the water system, we're doing a lot of work on aging infrastructure, water quality, climate change, and all of it is with a foundation in fiscal responsibility. So that's some of our major projects. And Arinda is, as President Young mentioned, one of our largest right now that is still ongoing in the first couple of years of this 10-year CIP. Wastewater, we're doing a lot of fun stuff. I'll just put a plug in for us and Central San and others. Go take a wastewater treatment plant tour. If you haven't done it, they're incredible. It's a great place to go. Okay, that's my last plug. You've done it? Isn't it great? Yeah. Yeah. I've tried to move my office there, but they won't let me yet. Okay. So this is how we spend the money that's entrusted to us, and we take it very seriously. And, and that's part of what I do for East Bay MUD and for the community, is making sure we're investing in the right places. And for us, on the water side, 56 cents of every dollar we spend goes straight to infrastructure improvements, and the work related to that. Another 26 cents is for water service. So now we're up to 82 cents is directly investing in our community and serving high-quality water and storing and maintaining all of it. Administration and customer service is an important part of what we do. It includes a call center, education, which we're investing more in in this budget, and it includes me. Hi, I'm in there too. And then natural resource management, regulatory compliance. So in there is some of that watershed management and the fuels work. We've added money to that, about a million in the last couple of years. We're spending about two and a half next, in each year of the budget. And then water supply is a critical part of what we do. When, when there's a drought, we need to have alternative water supplies available. And so that's all wrapped up in those last five cents there. This year, I can normally tell you a little bit simpler of a study, or of a story about our rates, which is that all rates, you know, most rates are going to move up at about the same pace. We have done our cost of service study, which we're required to do every 10 years, and that means the rates are changing a little bit. So the increase is similar or slightly lower bill even for folks who are using a less than average or less than the median. Our median bill is increasing a little bit, I'll talk about. And then if a high-water users are getting a little bit higher of an increase, and it's all driven by the way the cost of service study math worked out. So, in a second, I'll go on this next one. The new rates are effective July 1st, pending board approval, and the board will also approve rates that will be effective July 1, 2026 as well. So it's two years, two year budget, two year rates. Water remains about 2 cents per gallon. So compared to, sometimes we hold up a bottle of Smart Water and say, Smart Water, $2, $3, $4 a bottle, 2 cents per gallon, on the other hand, from East Bay MUD. And I like East Bay MUD water a little bit more. And so the impact is about 12 cents per day for the median, the typical bill. So about half our customers use less water than that, half use more. It's about 12 cents per day increase in 2026, and another 14 cents per day in 2027. Joe back there in the white shirt has some handouts if anyone interested in the audience is interested. We have PDFs as well. What does it look like for a low-use, typical-use and high-use customer, as well as how to get involved? And then every customer and property owner within East Bay MUD should have received what I have a miniature version of with me, Prop 218 notice in the mail. So it should have, you should have gotten it by now. They're available on our website as well. But it, that is how to participate in the public hearing process, including protest and objection processes. And so we always like to remind folks, and especially folks who are connected to the community in ways where we can't be necessarily or aren't yet, is we have a customer assistance program, and it's got a generous income limit, meaning a lot of people can qualify that may not think they would qualify for a normal customer assistance program. So we really encourage people to participate in this. And we think, we're at a high point ever. We've invested more money in getting out into the community and making sure it's accessible. About 11,000 customers. We think there's probably about 30,000 that are eligible based on census numbers. So we really want to make sure we keep reaching all the folks we can with that. So we encourage folks, if they can't afford their bill, to learn more about the customer assistance program, which is also all over our materials. Finally, we're in that public outreach stage, and next week, we are doing one of our key steps, that May 13, but June 10 is where we would direct people to go for the public hearing process. And that's it for me. Do you have any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. And I know you also presented at the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference last week, so thank you for that. Do we have questions from council members?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So you talk a lot about pipelines and infrastructure, but what about fire hydrants? And is there a plan for updating, I know in Arinda, there are a lot of fire hydrants that are not new, and they probably need some infrastructure upgrade.
You know, I know we replace them based on need, and I used to have in my head the number we replace per year. Do you remember, anyone? Okay, no. We do get around to it when there's a need to replace them, and they're part of sort of all the infrastructure we're keeping track of. So I don't know if there's specific ones, but reach out if you have questions. Yeah.
I know about, maybe it was between five and 10 years ago, they did a project where they were actually painting the caps of different fire hydrants, different colors. And I don't know if after that project, if there's been any work done to upgrade the hydrants that were identified as having low pressure.
No, I don't know. Yeah, we can get back to you though and find out more. Yeah.
I'm gonna just, oh.
Please.
I mean, there are parts of Arinda that do not have great pressure. And the challenge of upgrading hydrants to have that pressure is something that falls on the city, to the jurisdiction to pay for upgrades. And we've talked with city manager about this a couple months ago, and happy to do more discussion. But that's how the, the fire hydrant system is, you know, is, is paid for upgrades. But when we're doing work, we definitely will replace hydrants. And when we need to replace hydrants that aren't working, that, that covers under it. But the pressure itself is not something that we can easily correct within our cost of service.
And along the
Say that right, Clifford?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Along the same lines, we all saw down in the Palisades fires that the water supply for firefighting was not adequate. Can you talk a little bit about what East Bay MUD has thought about in regards to adequate water supply for firefighting?
Yeah, Sam may, Sam or even Clifford may have something to say. The first thing I would say is that fire hydrants are for fighting house fires. One, two, three houses on fire. They are not designed, and no system is designed for what happened in the Palisades. Fortunately or unfortunately, East Bay MUD in 1990, 1990, I just bought my first house in Oakland, and, you know, 10, 15 blocks away, the Oakland Hills fire happened while we were out in Half Moon Bay at the Pumpkin Patch. And got back to all of that. That fire, which destroyed 3,000 homes, is about a quarter the size of the Palisades fire, but still a very significant fire that we took lots of lessons from. So in the public safety power supply shut-offs, we made sure we had pumping capacity, because those shut-offs were to prevent, you know, were to be aware of fire danger. So we had pumping capacity in all of our reservoirs. We make sure that we top up our reservoirs when, you know, we're in red flag days, so that we have as much water as possible to gravity feed for fires. We also, Arinda's and Moraga are both very lucky in having two big pools of water at San Pablo, or three, San Pablo, Briones, and Lafayette, well, and Upper San Leandro, that we can, you know, send in tankers to do air-water drops. So that and, and fuel reduction around our homes are, you know, as well as what we do in the watershed, are the ways to prevent it. But it, you know, as you all know, it's, it's not an if, just like earthquakes, it's, it's a when. Hopefully we can, you know, present, prevent the worst. But we're living in those times.
Yes, we are. Any comments? Yes.
I have my question for Sam, because it's budget thing night. Normally with a budget, what you see is an annualized cost and a percentage increase. And I, I got my spidey sense up when all of the cost increases in the packet were about per gallon, or hey, if you're a low-water user, it might go down. For an average user, what is the percentage year-over-year increase, please?
Yeah, for our average, so this is where on the water side, it really does get a little tricky. For the average user, it's about a 6% or so. So that, that's the average. But it is, it, if you're a low-water user, which is less likely in a single-family home in this area, but that is about 25% of our customers are this or lower amount for a single-family, their bill's actually going to go down by about a dollar.
And how about a high-water user?
A 75th percentile, which is about 225 gallons per day. And we say indoor use is about 40 gallons per person per day. So if that helps kind of, yeah, judge that, it's going up about $12. So, and on about $100. So about a 12% on this side. And then the next year, that's all the first year. The next year, I can give you a much easier answer, 6.5%, almost across the board, a little bit rounding, but.
And then does it flatten it? Or does it keep going up at that? Because that's pretty far above inflation. What does that curve look like, please?
Yeah. So we, this year, for the first time, I'm proud of this only because it was a lot of work, was we did a 10-year projection of rates and balanced our CIP across those 10 years. And it is a 6.5%. The first two years, though, the first year is messy because of cost of service. And then it is two more 6.5%, and then 5% after that, for the remaining six years. And
So that cumulative increase is what?
It's about 74%, about 75%.
Over about an eight-year period?
Over 10 years.
Eight to 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I mean, I have, I have one, which is, it's, it's more of a commentary, you know, our, one thing that has come up as we address, you know, as we try to create a more wildfire-adapted community in Arinda, given the extreme risk is vegetation management with our partners who own land and their land management. And so to that end, there is a very strong interest, I think, with our, from our residents, in making sure that our agencies collaborate and see how we can come together to identify and assess sort of the holes, right? Where, what are the challenges we face, and how can we work together so those challenges become opportunities for us to solve them? So to that end, you know, I know that, I know that we've had a lot of collaboration and, you know, appreciate all the community education you're doing around, around the rate increases. And I think that I at least would love to see us have more regular meetings around, and maybe have a meeting soon that's focused on, you know, how we can together, how we can learn more about fire breaks, or fuel reduction, or what you're doing, especially, of course, in, in the lands that are adjacent to our residential areas in Arinda, and how we can work together to assess challenges and needs, and see if we can, you know, we can't solve, some of these problems are really expensive. We recognize that, you know, as leaders. But we, we can at least identify them and see if we can work together, I think, to solve them. And I don't know if my colleagues have anything to add.
Last year, we did, we had a presentation, I think it was last year, a presentation from all of East Bay Parks, East Bay MUD, Arinda Moraga Fire, our wonderful Scott Hill, who could give you, how many hours is your meeting going to be tonight, you know, to talk about, and we can give, we give tours as well to talk about what we're doing in the watershed, and we can certainly arrange that. We have done that a couple of times. But yeah, I mean, collaboration and pooling of resources is essential.
Right. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Young.
You know, I'd also say, we, I think some of the human tragedy of the LA fires was the evacuation side. And I, you heard me say, talk about this at the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference. You know, there will be wildfires in our communities in California, increasingly so. And the size and shape of them is such that all the fuel management in the world may not prevent a tragedy. What would prevent the human tragedy is, is us coordinating on, and building the community trust on, on, and making sure we're doing the right thing around evacuations, and how do we get people ready to understand the messages that come from public safety? And how do we get those messages out in the right ways? That's just a thing I happen to be passionate about. In addition to the infrastructure side and physical side, that when we talk about wildfire, there's, there's a huge human element that is, is really how we prevent the worst tragedies. So it's my own encouragement.
I think I speak for everyone up here in saying, we could not agree with you more, and we are actually doing a whole lot around that. But we also want to, what we can address together is that, you know, infrastructure. So
Yeah, I don't mean
I just wanted to, I had to use the opportunity to
Please.
to pitch it, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did not actually see if there was any public comment on this item. Okay, see none. That does bring us to public forum. The public forum provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And in addition to that, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if the speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. So to that end, if there's anyone here who wants to speak on any future item on the agenda, if you don't want to wait till later, you can do so right now. And come on up.
The heart of the follow-up is a series
of wildfire and the impact on our community, especially, I'm talking about pickleball. I do recognize.
And can you, if you could just make sure you speak into the microphone, and also just go ahead and let us, let us know who you are.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm Marcela Austinfeld, and I'm Arinda resident for the past 17 years. I'm, I'm here to speak on, I guess there's a capital improvement agenda item in regards to pickleball. I speak from, I have some notes, but hopefully I can, I won't get too nervous, I can't speak from the heart. But I'm very appreciative of having a public pickleball here in Arinda. And in the past three years that I've been playing, I've noticed a strong increased presence. I'm grateful for the city, for the recent resurfacing of the courts. Appreciate being accommodated. And so I hate having to criticize a good thing, but I think I can speak on behalf of many pickleball players. Despite having the more, two more courts, the lines and the placements are a mess. It's busy, the confusing and distracting. It's busy, the confusing and distracting. It seems that although pickleball benefited from two more courts, the lining and the resurfacing of it definitely is tennis forward. So I guess I'm just here to speak and just kind of just share that this is an actual, I don't know, just like the park is something that's being valued by the community. I think the pickleball community is, has shown its strength in that, the kind of deserving of having made its own space. And I know it's a big expense to have its own dedicated courts, but maybe in the short term, you can consider maybe resurfacing or giving Court One as an option, just a dedicated pickleball. And I just mentioned that just because there's a strong support, a strong community, and it doesn't seem like it has an impact on tennis, and it's its own entity now. I'd like to just share on, and on a personal note, in the summer of 2023, I was diagnosed with cancer, and I'd been playing pickleball for a year. It was something that I enjoyed. From the summer to the fall, all I can do to get out of bed when I was going through my chemo was get down to that community center and play pickleball with the community that that supported me, whether a couple minutes from my house, but that's all I could think of in the two weeks I had in between my chemo. All I can do is get better, and I had that, those five days before I started chemo again to get down there and play pickleball. It was the pickleball that got me out of bed. And to this day, I still had another year and a half of treatment, and I'm still playing, doing the best I can, and it's that community. And I'm all about community, and I just, I hate seeing any conflict. And I just wanted to share with you that it's impactful and it's appreciated, appreciated.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you for sharing that with us in such a heartfelt way.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the public forum part of the agenda? Again, you're welcome to speak on any item on the agenda. If you don't want to stick around and make your comment later, you can do so now.
Just wanted to note for the record that we got one public comment from Nick Warnoff. It's in your packet and on the back table.
And we did receive that. That was a written comment, yes. Thank you. Okay, seen none. I will close public forum, which takes us to our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any members of the council like to remove any items from the consent calendar for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask, although I'm looking at the city manager here, if item F7, I had requested if there was any better graphic that they could provide that showed that. I don't know if that's available for tonight's meeting.
I believe our city engineer has put together, I don't know how we're going to display it, but we do have a graphic we can share, which is a scenario that shows, it's representative of where the lines are, so.
In that case, can we at least pull it from the consent calendar, and then maybe we can just pass it down the line or something? I might be the only one who even had the question.
Yeah, I don't know. See, if there's any better way to show what we have.
I don't have a visual, but I do have a hard copy of better graphics.
Right now, so.
Procedurally, I think.
Procedurally, why don't we pull it? And we can deal with it very quickly, but I think we're currently considering pulling F7 so staff can make a presentation. Okay, so, cool. So there's a request to pull item F7. We have a public comment card on F6. Mayor, I'd like to pull item F5 on the roads report. Okay. Any other? Does anyone want to remove items F1 through F4 from the consent calendar? If not, do I have a motion and a second to adopt consent calendar items F1 through F4?
Sis, Cara, I'll make that motion.
Okay, okay. Motion made by Councilmember Hoxsey and seconded by Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, and that takes us to item F5, which is approval of fiscal year 2025-26 SB1 Road Repair and Accountability Act project list. And the recommendation is to adopt the resolution 2625 approval of the project list as required by the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. So I will, do you want to tell us? I was hoping to ask some questions about sort of how the list is put together. I'm obviously newer to the council, so how we decide which roads are on the list each year, and also about if a road has been torn up by another utility and isn't repaired to, is still not looking like we would like it. I'm thinking of La Esparal. What do we need to do to get that either fixed by the utility that tore it up or for us to add that to the road repair list?
Yeah.
City Engineer, do you want to take this, those questions?
It's in my plate. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'll speak about the list first. So generally, our city uses a software program called Streetsaver that kind of helps us manage the pavement on a constant basis. We run budget scenarios and then develop project lists out of it. So the list that's in the attachment is the first version, I would say, of that software. Typically, how we do that is, once we get that list, we start looking at other priorities. That's either a project that couldn't get done previously or some other project that needs immediate attention. We switch those into that, add those to the list as needed, and taking budget into consideration, move forward with whatever the project that you see as the annual paving project that comes out for construction. Sorry, the second part of the question was?
About La Esparal specifically?
Oh, La Esparal, yeah. So there is a project on La Esparal that East Bay Mud is actually doing. They are replacing their water main. There are multiple things they have done with the agencies depending on the street and what our plan is for the street. So in this case, La Esparal was last paved, I believe, back in 2017 or 2016 in that time period. So we don't have an immediate paving project that would come and replace like in a very significant manner. It'll be mostly a preventive treatment. So in those kind of situations, we usually let the utility company do the final paving on that. So we have a standard what they follow. So what you're seeing right now is a temporary paving, so that allows them to just keep the area closed and continue finishing the project. And once it's all done, they'll come back and they redo the paving. That'll be a lot more smoother and finished.
Okay. And the coordination between, say, East Bay Mud and the city with the road closures? I see a lot of times there'll be a sign that's left up that says the road is closed, but the road isn't closed, or no notice to, you know, residents about exactly what roads are going to be closed and when. Can you talk about that at all?
Yeah, so all road closures actually require city council approval. As it is in one of the consent items tonight was presented. We handle it, again, based on the utility and the project. If it's something that we are very familiar with, we have done multiple times in the past, and they've been consistent in how they are approaching it, we will, you know, if it meets all our traffic control requirements, that's established our encroachment permit requirements, then we will allow to move forward. We always do get updates from them. We meet with them prior to the project, construction work, and make sure that whatever the city requirements are for road closure and all are implemented in the proper manner. We do have very specific noticing requirements. We ask them to issue postcard notices, like East Bay Mud has set up like a webpage that they set up for each project, and they keep updates so that the neighborhood is aware of it. We also make sure that all the emergency services are notified of the road closures and that the contractor is prepared to allow emergency services and other services as needed to pass through. So there are multiple things that gets put into place, but of course, I'm sure there is instances where one or two signs may have been left out. But our crew, maintenance crew also keeps an eye on these things. Our inspector keeps an eye on these things. So as soon as we see something, we bring it up and take it off.
That's great. And is there some process for citizens to ask for roads to be added to the road repair list, or if they notice problems with various roads?
There is a way they can inform us of like any damaged situation in a road. They always, the Public Works website page has information on it. They are welcome to call in too. Smaller things, we tend to, immediately, we don't, we won't generally wait for the annual paving project to address that. As far as requesting a street, that's not our street selection policy guidelines for it. So we are just following how it's set up right now. But we do take comments into consideration. So if there is significant concern, we will take a review of it. And if, based on the review, we do notice, because, you know, streets, things happen, and some streets behave differently when there is like heavy rainfall and stuff. So if things are, from an engineering standpoint, needs immediate attention, we do take that into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, any other questions on this item? Okay. Thank you, City Engineer. If any further public comment on this item, item F5? Okay, hearing none, I'll close public comment on item F5. And any further discussion by the council?
I'll move, we approve F5?
Okay. And to be clear, we're approving, adopting resolution 2625.
I think it's 25, wait, the?
Twenty, yeah.
2625.
Twenty-five, you're right.
Approval of fiscal year 2025 project list as required by the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. We have a motion to approve that resolution. Any second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember G. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion passes unanimously, and that takes us to item F6, which is an ordinance 2503 to amend chapter 17.21 of the Arinda municipal code, and this has to do with tree management. And I pulled this because we had a speaker card, though I don't see a name on it. I don't have any questions myself, but if there's someone who would like to address the council, I wanted to make sure we could hear from you, and I see him coming up.
Just want to say thank you, Arinda Council, for all that you do. I've lived here only a few years now, and I've seen the city run really well, especially compared to other places.
As I've lived before in the Bay. So wanted to just say thank you in general. I came here today because I had questions and concerns about this a little bit. And while I don't have strong objections to the way that it was written, I did skim it earlier this, before in the meetings. I couldn't find the exact written text anywhere online, and I don't know if it is there through the Arinda news, which is how I originally found out about it. And I do want people, if they, you know, have fire concerns and they wish to remove their trees, but the way it's worded, many different things of downsides of like the protected trees are mentioned, but one which is not prominent enough and wasn't mentioned in the news, nor do I see it much in there. And I do think people should be aware of this more properly, and not just the fire risks, which are tremendous and, you know, worry us and many other people every day, but is also the landslide risk when removing trees. And as I do kind of all the time, just remove like the grass and everything from our hillsides, I see erosion and things slipping and falling all the time, just with the normal vegetation that we're required to remove. And I fear the way it's written today, this not only encourages people to remove the trees without considering erosion and other things that not just their own homes, but people further down in the hill may cause. And my worry here stems from also the nearby city, I believe Berkeley, which made mandatory requirements for removing trees within even oaks and other things that are protected within five feet. And I fear, I don't, I know this isn't a mandatory requirement, but we are going through fire reviews before the end of the year where the fire department, and I think, I would just like us to just more carefully word these things so as people make their individual decisions, they are thinking about erosion more, which people, I didn't see it, it may be in there, but, and I apologize for not having time to fully look through everything, but it was, it was really hard for me to find. I just feel like it could be more prominent, and that's the main thing I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. City manager or city staff, does anyone want to address that?
I think Darren can provide a little bit of an update on what, what's actually changing with respect to the tree ordinance.
Hello. Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. Thank you for that comment. I do, I would like to point out that that soil erosion is something that is considered within our findings. That's actually not changing. That is a standard that we have used and we apply to any tree removal permits in the past, and we are maintaining that with this proposal. So that is under, let's pull this out, so that's permit category one, protected trees on properties not involving a development application, and it is the first finding, the effect of tree removal or destruction on shade views privacy, fire safety, soil erosion, and flow of surface water. So that is something that is, you know, it's kind of tucked in there and hidden from the public potentially because it is just one piece of that particular item. But that's something that when we are processing a permanent application, we need to be able to speak to and make the findings for. So soil erosion, hillside issues, that does definitely become a prominent item of consideration for planning staff.
And, thank you. And I just wanted to sort of note that we did, that there, the language of the ordinance, just to address some of the comments, the language that we are changing, including sort of a red line, is in our packet, agenda packet is pages 141 through 164, and also includes, the prime, my understanding is the primary purpose of these changes, how it came to the council is we actually had public comment from folks who were advised by their insurance companies to remove trees in order to stay re-insured. And, you know, when they attempted to do so, they realized they had to get permits, even for trees that were sort of, you know, within, within five feet of their house, or for whatever reason, the insurance company was telling them to remove it. And so part of these changes was simply to have a more user-friendly process for certain vegetation to be removed or to be allowed to be removed, certain trees, when the, when the requirement to do so was really requested of someone in order to adapt to our changing climate for insurance purposes or wildfire remediation. And our fire district hasn't yet adopted any rules on Zone Zero because our fire district is waiting to see what the state does and what their regulations, regulations look like before adopting anything here. Is that?
Yes, that is correct.
That's accurate, yes.
I don't have any more questions. Does anyone here? I have, I have one question, and that is with regard to redwood trees, which are not mentioned in the ordinance, and I think I brought this up before as to whether or not they should be added as a protected tree in the ordinance. And I didn't know if you had had a chance to think or look at that question.
We have not actually considered that. We do understand that it was the city council's direction that we would be coming back within another year or two for a more comprehensive, like five-year update, and that this is more of a short-term fix to a couple of the glaring issues. We would need, I think, to make a determination on what types of trees should be constituted as protected trees if we were to make changes to that definition. We would probably have to study that issue a lot more carefully.
And I do recall that one of the things we thought is we may even need to revisit this again once, if and when MOFD updates their ordinance, right? Any other questions? I didn't see any other public comment. I don't know that I opened it up for other public comments. I wanted to do so. Is there any other public comment from anyone else on item F6? Okay, seeing none and having no other written cards, I will close public comment on item F6 and bring it back for any further discussion? I would just say that trees are important to our climate and to our community for so many different reasons, that I do think it's really important that we do have an ordinance that protects trees, and I appreciate the need for this.
And I appreciate the need for this exemption sort of to take into account the insurance and other issues homeowners are facing. But I think it's really important that we also balance that with the importance of trees to our environment and not get so caught up in the removal that we, you know, over-remove. We don't want to see, you know, clear cutting of lots and things because the trees are really important to Arinda and to our environment.
Thank you. I think, yeah, I would agree. And I did want to thank our public commenter for raising some important, important questions and issues. And if you have further questions, I think, I'm sure we can follow up offline. The, the process of how we run these meetings doesn't allow for back and forth, but we would, I'm sure be happy to talk with you more if you give us your contact info because we didn't have it on the card, so. With that, do we have a motion to waive the full reading and adopt ordinance 2503, amending chapter 17.21, tree management of the Arinda Municipal Code?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoxey moved, a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember G seconds, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item F7. So I believe, were we able to get that loaded on the screen? Great. So, okay. And the, see how that magic works, Eva?
Thank you.
The agenda item is a parcel map for subdivision MS 2024-003, urban lot split at 181 Camino Pablo. And I know that council, our vice mayor had a question.
I did not have a question. I felt that the graphics in the material didn't allow me to make an informed decision and I asked if they had a better picture.
Thank you.
So this is basically us looking through our GIS system and by no means should this be used as a specific document by any entity to determine the actual lot configurations, but this is representative of where that lot split would occur.
Right. Lot line adjustments are typically recorded documents. So that's why usually a surveyor prepares those and makes it very simple in lines and text. What we have done here is just the county GIS-based property map, or GIS map that has the property lines and overlaid the document we received from the applicant and tried to show the two lots that split that, leave that lot. On the top side is the lot A and bottom piece is the lot B. And there is an east mend on the northwest side of the top lot that allows access to the back lot there.
This lot already has two homes on it, so there was two homes on one lot and then they are splitting the lot to provide one home per lot.
That's correct.
So they're not putting another home, they're just?
At this point, they have not proposed any additional. At this point, they, they could take advantage of other state laws that allow them to provide ADUs or things like that. But at this point, they were just splitting the lots, I'm assuming, for some sort of transaction.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any further questions? Any public comment on item F7? Seeing none, I would close public comment. Any discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt resolution number 25, 27-25, approving parcel map for subdivision MS 2024-003, urban lot split at 181 Camino Pablo?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our public hearing. Item G on our agenda. Tonight's public hearing is a minor zoning text amendments to comply with state law, including accessory dwelling units or ADUs, emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers, residential care facilities, transitional and supportive housing and employee farmworker housing. Can we have the staff report?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Selena Palmer, our assistant planner, will be making the presentation this evening.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Malcony, councilmembers and members of the public. As we just heard, this project includes zoning text amendments to title 17 of the Arinda Municipal Code. All of the proposed changes have been presented to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. Originally, the scope of the amendments was a little wider and we've narrowed the proposal down to just those required under state law. The proposed amendments are staff-initiated minor changes to the zoning code in order to be in compliance with state law and clarify sections of the code. These are state-mandated changes and are not optional. As mentioned, the scope of the amendments before the Planning Commission was a little wider and in trimming down the staff report to only include the changes required by state law, the discussion section of the staff report refers to one of the changes that we removed from this proposal. Staff originally wanted to update the definition of kitchen. However, we will be saving that for a future round of updates. Here is an overview of the proposed amendments, which we are including. I will touch on six different sections of code listed here. Definitions, residential district land use regulations, accessory dwelling units, the senior housing overlay district development standards, public semi-public and utility district land use regulations, and additional development regulations for emergency shelters. And we will get into the specifics for each one. In section 17.2.3, the definition section of the code, we have added three definitions as seen here for employee farmworker housing, low barrier navigation center and residential care facility. These are new land uses that are being added to the residential and public semi-public and utility districts. We've also updated the definition for transitional housing to clarify that the six-month maximum stay will start at the beginning of assistance. And you can see that addition underlined here. In schedule 17.3.3, the residential land use regulations table, modifications to the text are shown in bold and underlined on this slide. We've added residential care facility, transitional and supportive housing and employee farmworker housing to the table to address the housing element six cycle program implementation action 4A to ensure that Arinda's permitting and approval processes do not unduly constrain or delay the construction of housing. We have also changed the regulations for large and family, large and small family daycares to be a permitted use by right in all residential zoning districts in order to comply with California Health and Safety Code section 1568.78, which was updated with the passage of Senate Bill 234 in 2019. For residential care facilities in the RVL and RL zoning districts, they must demonstrate compliance with state law and have a license to operate the facility. Pursuant to California Health and Safety Code section 1568.0831, a residential care facility that serves six or fewer persons shall be considered a residential use of property. For transitional and supportive housing, government codes section 65583 and 65650 require supportive housing to be a permitted use by right in zones where multifamily and mixed-use development is permitted. So we've included it as a permitted use in the RM district. For employee farmworker housing in the RVL and RL zoning districts, they must serve six or fewer persons and per Health and Safety Code section 1702.1.5, they shall be permitted in the same manner as other single-family structures of the same type in the same zone and across all zones that allow single-family residential uses. The accessory dwelling unit section of the code proposes a most significant amount of changes as this section also had an overhaul in the government code. Firstly, the section of law related to ADUs and JADUs was moved in the government code. So all of the government code references have been updated to the new sections. And we've also specified that if any of the regulations listed in our code are inconsistent with state law, then the state law regulations will govern. Some changes have been made for clarity, such as matching language in the state law, changing extreme line to state exempt. And instead of listing each applicable zoning district in Arinda, it now refers to all residential or mixed-use zones. And we've added that the fire code applies. Staff received one comment from the California Housing Defense Fund on this section of the ADU updates prior to the Planning Commission meeting. The letter specifically claimed that OMC section 17.3.4B2B, as seen here, and one other section, which I'll point out once we get there, would not be in compliance with state law. Staff's interpretation and implementation of these sections have been in compliance with state law. However, for clarity, we've opted to further modify these sections. For section 17.3.4B2B, staff have modified the language to match the language in California Government Code section 66323, which is building permit application and approval requirements. So we previously had kind of an inverse language of what's in the government code, where ours said only one ADU or JADU is permitted unless, and then the government code has it the opposite, one ADU and one JADU are permitted if. So we switched that language to match. And for clarity, we've added that MOFD, the Maracaunda Fire Protection District, will be the determining body for fire safety regulations. Okay, so here, instead of listing the height requirement for detached new construction ADUs in a single-family zone in this section, we've moved it to a section 17.3.4C4C, which lists the maximum height for all types of ADUs. And here, instead of listing the height requirement for detached new construction ADUs in multifamily zone in this section, we've also moved it to section 17.3.4C4C. Additionally, we've changed the number of ADUs allowed in multifamily zones to match the government code section 66323. In this section, we've again updated the language. Instead of listing each applicable zoning district, district in Arinda, it now refers to all residential or mixed-use zones. We've added that the applicable fire code applies and updated the government code applicable section numbers. Okay, so here's where we move the previously mentioned ADU building height sections. We've modified the sections related to ADU building heights to be consistent with government code, which include increasing the height limit from 16 feet to 18 feet when within one-half, one-half mile of walking distance of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor and/or on a lot with an existing or proposed multifamily multi-story dwelling. In this section, we've made changes to the parking in order to meet state law requirements. So no additional spaces shall be required for studios or when a permit application for an ADU is submitted along with an application to create a new single or multifamily dwelling on the same lot. Okay, this section just updated the government code numbers. And here's the other section the California Housing Defense Fund claimed would not be in compliance with state law. So for clarity, instead of identifying specific scenarios for combination proposals, staff has stricken most of the language to instead refer directly to California Government Code section 66320, which is the permit approval process. And in the corner, I have added an example to show how staff has acted in compliance with this section of state law. So when receiving combination proposals, if we've received a project that triggers discretionary approvals, we specify in the noticing that any ADUs associated with discretionary projects are not subject to discretionary review. In this section, we've added that replacement parking is not required when a parking space has been converted and updated the code section numbers. One additional proposed change includes removing the prohibition for ADUs or JADUs on parcels that have used both the authority contained in government's code sections 65852.21 and 66411.7, meaning both the SB9 lot split and SB9 unit government code sections. However, it would still limit the site to no more than two dwelling units of any kind on a parcel created through SB9. So moving on from ADUs, changes to section 17.4.33, the senior housing overlay district, include amendments to the sections for story limits and building height limits to keep the sections regulated as required by the closest adjoining residential or downtown district-based regulations and remove the statement or as established by the Planning Commission by conditions imposed at the time of review for approvals required by this title. These changes are to address housing element six cycle program implementation action 1D to provide for diversity of housing types to meet current and future needs for all residents without compromising the semi-rural character of Arinda's neighborhoods. And for these two sections, we received feedback from the Planning Commission to clarify that if there are multiple adjoining residential or downtown-based district regulations, the more restrictive of the regulations shall apply. Changes to schedule 17.9.2, the public semi-public and utility district land use regulations include updating emergency shelter to be a permitted use in the PS district and to add the use low barrier navigation center to the table of land use regulations for the PS district. These changes are proposed to address housing element six cycle program implementation action 4A as well as government code section 65660, which states a low-barrier navigation center is a use by right in areas zoned for mixed-use and non-residential zones permitting multifamily uses. And finally, changes to section 17.9.4, additional development regulations for emergency shelters include increasing the maximum number of client beds nightly from seven to 20, modifying the location criteria to remove the distance requirements from an emergency shelter use to the Arinda Bart Station, Highway 24 and general daycare uses, while adding a minimum of 300 feet of separations from another emergency shelter use, modify the parking requirements so that no parking minimum is required for new shelters within one-half mile of the Bart Station, and add that off-street parking shall be based on demonstrated need, provided the standards do not require more parking for the emergency shelters than for other residential or commercial uses within the same zone. These changes are proposed to address the housing element six cycle program implementation action 4A and per government code section 65583 to ensure that shelter spacing requirements will only be subject to the same development and management standards that apply to residential or commercial development within the same zone, except for those standards prescribed by statute. After noticing for the March 11th Planning Commission meeting, staff received one email letter from the California Housing Defense Fund with comments on the proposed changes as previously mentioned. To address this comment, staff updated their original proposal before presenting it to the Planning Commission. At the meeting, the Planning Commission approved resolution 25-01, recommending city council approval of proposed ordinance 25-02 with all of the modifications to the zoning code that we went over. For tonight's meeting, staff originally noticed this project for the April 7th City Council meeting. However, at that meeting, the item was continued to a date certain tonight and staff received no further comments regarding the proposed changes. As the proposed changes bring the zoning code into compliance with state law and provide clarity for staff and applicants alike, staff recommends the city council approve proposed ordinance 25-02, find that this ordinance is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. Thank you.
Before we start, can I just applaud her for saying all?
I was just gonna say, thank you. Thank you, Associate Planner Palmer. That was a very thorough and report and I was very impressed that you, I'm a lawyer and I would have slept on all those subdivision provisions and subsections. Thank you for recommending such detailed, specific changes to keep us in compliance and for interacting on that. Do we have questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And, you know, yet again, it seems the state is removing local, local control from the city and, and taking it to the state level. But just for the public's understanding, what, what would happen if we did not pass these changes? What, what's the ramifications for not complying?
Well, we would still be subject to them because they're state law, but I would defer to the city attorney.
So one of the, well, as Selena stated, we're required to comply with state law whether we amend our municipal code or not. But then in the city's adopted housing element, which was certified by HCD, the city commits to taking these actions. So there are basically two ways in which the actions are required.
And so then we would not be in compliance with our housing element if we don't pass these?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions from the council?
Yes, Vice Mayor. And a quick, there was on page 204, there's a term about how you can have up to eight ADUs on a multifamily parcel if that doesn't exceed the number of pre-existing units. And I just couldn't visualize what that situation might be. Can you just give me a common sense explanation of that?
So, basically, on a parcel that allows multifamily, you're allowed to have a certain number of ADUs depending on the number of units that are there. So, I don't have the math to know how many units.
It was more just like eight standalone ADUs seemed awfully weird relative to the other provisions. I just didn't know there was a fact set that would make that easier to... It's not our fact set, so not a big deal if you don't know, and I just couldn't follow.
So, I've also struggled with that, and the way I've come around to thinking is that ADUs in a multifamily context are basically just more multifamily units.
Yeah, except that term was for standalones.
I know, but it...
I'm with you.
The number is now eight.
The problem is I'd be quick. The other question is in 1734 about how... I use the term underparked, right? That you can't require parking, blah, blah, blah. And I'm wondering if Arinda has a fact situation where we could be pushing street parking as a solution, which the law kind of encourages, where we have red flag parking problems? Are we going to have a fact situation where we're pushing cars onto the street and then pushing them off the street?
So, this specifically doesn't require onsite parking spaces. You could still have them. It doesn't say you can't have them. So, if there's driveway parking, you can still use that. It's just not a requirement for ADUs in specific situations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. So, yes, in essence, you're correct. Cars could be pushed on or moved to the on-street parking. But we, of course, want to encourage parking where we can and where they're willing. But yes, you could end up with parking on the street.
Thank you. And I assume there's nothing to be done about that conflict?
No, not at this moment. Yeah.
I would suggest there probably is nothing that could be done about the conflict, and we're talking about an average of four and a half days a year where that conflict...
Totally understand. Yeah. No further questions. Thank you.
Any further questions from council members? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open public hearing and take public comment on this item, Item G1. Is there any... Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? I see no one in the audience to comment. Do we have any cards? City Clerk is saying we don't, so I will close the public hearing portion since we have no public comment and bring this back for council discussion. Any discussion on Item G1? Doesn't sound like there's much to discuss. I think you're referring to the fact that we don't have a lot of discretion in this.
Correct.
Basically, we need to adopt these amendments to comply with state law and our... To keep a compliant housing element. Is that what you're referring to, Councilmember Hoxsey?
Hundred percent.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment? I think we all agree with that.
So, I'll move that we adopt City Council Ordinance 25-02 and find that it's not subject to SEQA and direct staff to file the notice of exemption.
Okay. And I'll simply add to that that we are waiving the full reading of the text amendment of this ordinance as well.
And just to clarify, this evening is just the introduction. This ordinance will come back to you on your consent calendar for adoption at a future meeting.
Okay. And so, Councilmember G made a motion. Did we have a second? I'm sorry, I missed it if we did.
It's unclear. Do we make that motion now?
I think that is the motion on the table, to introduce Ordinance 2502, waiving the full reading this evening.
Okay. Yeah. So, the motion is to waive the full reading and introduce Ordinance Number 2502, find that this ordinance is not subject to SEQA and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. Is that correct, Councilmember G? That's what you would?
That's correct.
Just so we have a clear record of it. Thank you. And Councilmember Riley seconded that motion, correct? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously, and that ends our public hearing tonight. That takes us to our policy matters. We have three policy matters. This is under Item H of our agenda. And I know we have the... We earlier talked about that if there was any public comment for Item H3, we might move that up on the agenda tonight. So, I... Do we have any public comment on Items H3? Just raise your hand if you intend to comment. Okay. Then, I would propose that we move Item H3 and take that first amongst our policy items. So, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will take Item H3 and then go back to Items H1 and H2.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. I'll be taking the lead on this tonight, and then if you have any specific questions, Chief Rossi is also here to answer your questions regarding license plate reader cameras. This is coming, this item to you as a result of a request from Mr. Evan Dreyer, who brought up at the March 4th meeting the desire for the City Council to discuss whether or not the City Council had an interest in taking over the operations of the license plate reader cameras that were installed privately in the Nickherbacher neighborhood. Currently, there are two locations in the Nickherbacher neighborhood where these private license plate reader cameras are situated. We just noted that Mr. Dreyer has shared that he believes that they've been proven helpful in deterring criminal activity in his neighborhood. And after almost a year of being in place, he's requesting this... The city consider taking over the operations of those two cameras. I met with Chief Rossi to discuss the request. We also reviewed the current inventory of our license plate reader cameras. We have seven currently installed, two that we're trying to install, and talked about, you know, what we wanted to see long-term for license plate reader cameras in the community. At this point, because the areas surrounding the Nickherbacher neighborhood are covered by existing license plate reader cameras, both the ingress and egress into that neighborhood, we do not believe that additional publicly-owned license plate reader cameras are necessary in order to provide coverage for that neighborhood. Just a... Just a quick overview on LPRs. We, as I noted, we maintain those seven locations. In addition to the publicly available ones, we have noted from the Arinda Police Department that there are 12 privately-owned LPRs throughout the community. The city receives about 50 alerts annually on these wanted vehicles who are pinged on this system. We're averaging somewhere around four to five a month, of which we probably are able to respond to about 20 to 50% of those calls currently with the current system that we have. And, you know, we are evaluating what we think is the best approach for license plate readers for public... The public's piece of this. Chief Rossi and I have proposed a list of an additional 15 locations within the city of Arinda that would help to expand the camera program, and the goal of these locations is to provide the same level of neighborhood coverage that is in the Nickherbacher neighborhood to all the neighborhoods in the city of Arinda, and so we could try and address ingress and egress from all neighborhoods. Having those additional cameras also helps us do a better job of triangulating when a car does come into the community and figuring out where they could be headed, and that gives the police officers additional time to be responding to those calls for service. The cost of adding cameras is approximately about $55,000 for the physical equipment, and then the annual cost being $45,000 for the additional 15. We are recommending that the council include these 15 cameras in the upcoming budget. We have snuck it into your draft proposed budget this evening, and we are also looking to see if we can get the funding appropriated from one of Congressman DeSagne to help us pay for that first year of those additional cameras. And they've asked some questions about it, so we're hopeful that maybe that will be one of the things that he brings forward for federal appropriations. In the meantime, we will budget for it, but if funding is to materialize from the federal government, we will supplement the funding that is needed to fund those cameras. At this point, staff would not recommend the inclusion of the privately-owned cameras that Mr. Dreyer was requesting the council consider, but instead, consider the installation of 15 new publicly-owned cameras that are strategically placed in the community to ensure that we have the greatest coverage possible for the entire community. That concludes staff's report. I'm obviously here to answer any questions, but I think specifically, if you have questions about the cameras, Chief Rossi is your person.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager, staff. Council questions? Well, first of all, Chief Rossi, did you want to speak... Say anything before council questions, or you're here to...
I'm here for your questions, whatever you mean.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I suspect there might be questions, so Councilmember Riley.
I'm curious where the 15 might end up being. Can you give me just a sample of where those might be located?
So, we typically don't try to say exactly where they are, so we don't want people to avoid certain areas. But I mean, I think maybe Chief Rossi can talk about the approach he looked at when looking for where to place those cameras.
Yeah. We don't want to exactly say where the cameras are, not to be like super secretive, but just for overall safety and concerns for the community. The proposed plan for the 15 would basically cover any ingress and egress for the city. So, any way in or out of Arinda would be covered by this additional camera footage to assist us in locating any vehicles that are wanted or any other information we need in regards to any investigations for crimes that might have occurred or did occur in our city.
Does that mean outside Arinda to Lafayette as well, as to Maraga, as well as to the freeway? Okay.
Yes. We would be completely covered with this additional. Cameras would be able to cover us on all borders, even heading out towards San Pablo and that way.
Yeah. Can I have another question?
Yes.
Trying to buy a number. Can you name... Can you name any of the communities? Okay, I guess I want to know the communities. But anyway, my other question was, name any of the communities that are funded privately?
They're all over, so there's not...
Just give me a sample.
Sleepy Hollow, Lombardi, up in that area, Hidden Valley, up there, there's a couple cameras that are privately owned. There's a few cameras near the Las Vegas neighborhood. We have some, obviously, Mr. Evans is... Ever, excuse me. His location up in Nickherbacher, and then Wilder area, and then some near the El Toynall area.
So, we're not talking about like when a business has a camera?
No. These are on private property on individuals' residences.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Councilmember G?
I have two questions for you, Chief. So, are the privately-installed cameras the same kind of cameras that we're proposing to install?
Yes. Obviously, if the upgrades from technology and those type of things, they're basically the same cameras. There are some options that we're looking at for our camera system, some that either capture at different speeds or have the ability to pan tilt zoom. So, that way, if we need to use for emergency purposes, check an intersection to see why traffic's backing up and an evacuation, we'd be able to use that LPR-type camera to spin it around and look to see if we have an accident or we have something that's going on in that area. But for the most part, they're the same camera.
So, my second question is, so, the ones such as Mr. Dreyer's in the Nickherbacher neighborhood and the other privately-installed ones that you mentioned, are the... Is the police department viewing that footage or not at all?
So, they have to share that information with us. So, we have to request permission, and they have to grant that permission to us. So, right now, all of our citizens that have that, they're willing to share that with us. They're giving us that information, so that way, it's being received by not only Arinda Police Department, but all of the other police departments that use this system and share that system or that information.
So, effectively, we are able to view anything that any of the privately-installed cameras are picking up?
Correct. Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Hoxsey?
Is there any issue with cameras installed on private property as opposed to public property, and does that create complications?
Maybe, Osa.
I can try to... Can you repeat that question?
I'm just trying to differentiate between cameras that are installed on private property versus cameras the city would install on public property. Do we have to have easements or other?
Yes. So, just as we require private parties to get permission to put things in our public right-of-way, we would need permission to put things on private property.
And if they're already there, would we then... If we were going to take over paying for the contracts in the future, would we have to have some sort of agreement with those property owners or...
I haven't looked into that. I suppose you might move the camera into the public right-of-way off of private property, or you would need some permission, I suppose. I'm not sure what form that would take.
Okay. And then, Chief, if you're... Let's assume we're going to go ahead and put the 15 cameras that are proposed in our budget. Does it hurt to have the additional private cameras, or is it helpful, or is it just redundant?
So, to answer your question, any information that we get in is going to be helpful. As far as which ones that the council decides on whether they want to encompass and take on, that's entirely up to you. So, any camera footage that we get is helpful, but that's a direction that the council has to make a decision on. Outside of the 15 that were proposed, what they want to look at as far as the privately-owned cameras. I hope that...
Can I ask a follow-up question that might... Okay. Which is, if the council were to approve the 15 cameras that are being recommended, I know you can't tell us where they are because we don't want everyone... Anyone who's committing a crime to try to avoid them, right? That's the general sense why we don't disclose exactly where they are? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if those cameras were approved, you believe that based on the anticipated locations of an additional 15 cameras, in addition to, we have seven that are publicly maintained now?
Seven with two... The two that we're waiting for is... We have a lot of tree coverage, so I'm working right now to figure out how to get power to them, whether it's solar. I can't cut trees down, so it's a fight to try to figure that out. That's why we have such a pause on these additional two. It's been over a year, still working with FLOC to get these things in. So, with the additional 15 on top of our nine, you're asking...
I'm asking with that, with those cameras, if all of those are approved, do you believe... What does that get us? That in terms of... That gives us an eyes on LPR readers on all the ingress and egress points in most of Arinda or a lot of neighborhoods?
Yes. It's not going to go into the minutia of dipping into specific, smaller neighborhoods, but what it's going to give us is anything that comes into the city limits. If that's, let's just say, a wanted vehicle, as soon as it comes into the city limits, we're aware of it. The additional camera locations help us triangulate where that is. So, if it's traveling through to go towards downtown, we're going to know. If it's going towards Maraga, we're going to know. Towards Lafayette, we're going to know to help triangulate to deal with that problem. So, it won't be down to each little neighborhood, but it'll catch anything coming or leaving our city limits, so that way, we can also follow that, or it leads to our investigations that helps us solve crimes.
Okay. And the locations, just to be clear, are spread out throughout the city so that all neighborhoods benefit as they're anticipated to be put in?
Yeah. I spent a significant amount of time working with our detectives and my staff to basically, what is the best that's going to encompass the entire community and not leave anybody hanging? We're like, no, we're on the outskirts. You just missed it. Like, no, I have everything covered by these 15 cameras.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yes, of course.
Do you find them mostly to be sort of preventative so that you can, you know, see a stolen vehicle when it's coming into the city and stop it, or do you find it more helpful in actually, once a crime's been committed, in solving that crime?
So, for your... What you just said, for a stolen vehicle, yeah, it's great. It gives us, hey, a stolen vehicle is now in the city, allows our resource... It gives us, hey, a stolen vehicle is now in the city, allows our resources to be sent to that to hopefully get that person and hold them accountable. As far as investigation, that's probably where I would put a majority of its importance to our department is if there's any crime, if you just think of anything, whether it's a mail theft or somebody vandalized your car and you saw the vehicle, whatever it may be, we're able to kind of track that down. Even if you go to your simple hit and run, we can pull up cameras, start looking, the person said it was a blue car that had this at this time period, we can start tracking, find the license plate, contact that. So we're able to solve a lot of minor traffic collisions and contact them because maybe the party didn't know they made, they caused an accident or were involved in one, and then we get resolution that way. So their, the investigative side is the majority of where their value is.
Great, and do you feel like if we were going to pay for private cameras, we would have to do all 10 that exist currently? I mean, that's one of the concerns and maybe it's part of our discussion more than a question.
It might be more than a question, though, if you have-
I think that would be on the council, whether they would want to do that, so I'd leave that for your discussion, but I'm here to help.
Though I don't know if the city manager has a comment on that. The concern from, my professional opinion is that would be a concern that I would raise to you is if you start adopting and incorporating some of these private cameras into the system, what's the threshold to saying no? You know, I think it's great that neighborhoods feel like they want that extra layer of security and support for their community, no different than if they want to include surveillance cameras on their property and make that available to the police department as well and assisting in an investigation. So I would be concerned that if you were to include privately owned cameras into the system, especially those that are what I would consider somewhat redundant to the systems that you would have in place, that it would, you would have more people putting forward those requests and then coming forward and asking you to take over their privately maintained camera system. So it's, you have 12 now, but that means you don't know what will change if more people would want to adopt them and then turn to the city and ask you to take over, and then what's the threshold for saying yes or no?
Yes, Councilmember Riley, of course. Going back to the installation of 15 more, how long do you think that'll take?
Just talking to the rep today, I think once they're located, they have to do a site survey. They already know where we want to put them, they just have to have eyes on to basically see how the power's going to get to it, whether it's going to be a hard line or a solar panel, like a small little solar panel that goes with the camera. They have to make sure that those work for where we want everything, and then it's just a matter of time. So I can say roughly, maybe six months from moving forward that we should have all 15 up.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember G.
Chief, are these kinds of cameras very subject to vandalism or people interfering with them or are they high enough up that that's a rare occurrence?
Super rare. We'll get a call about somebody 20 feet up in the air on a pole, so if they're trying to do that, yes. They don't really get subject to any vandalism that we've had a report of or anywhere throughout Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office cameras, no reports of that.
Councilmember Riley, you had another question.
I'm sorry. Do these cameras or the newer cameras help us with, in the case of a fire, wildfire?
They would help us in the fact of our evacuation process.
So walk me through that.
So if, let's, we'll use, I hate saying that neighborhood, but let's just say Sleepy Hollow.
Oh, no, I hate that too.
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry.
I'm really sorry.
So we'll use that neighborhood. If with the contraflow and then putting in these different style cameras that are a part of their system, it would allow us at the EOC to basically control and ensure that the contraflow is working. I'm going to have my officers and deputy sheriffs there on scene running traffic, making sure, but that's going to be an additional assistance to us to make sure traffic is flowing out if we're starting to get a backup.
As you're reading the license plate, then you know the direction of the traffic.
Some of these will be like, not a live feed, it'll be a live feed for us to see that traffic, so I can spin the camera around to see while it's reading plates, that's its main purpose, but at our major choke points, these type of cameras would be instrumental in an evacuation to say we're, we just had another accident or we're having a flow here, like people are trying to make their own lanes, I need to put resources there. That's where that would come into play, but that doesn't need to be in all of the locations, just in our areas that are of higher concern.
Okay, okay, but no microphone where you can yell at the people that sit on the right side of the road?
No, ma'am, no, not at all. It'd be nice, but no.
Way of conversation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice, Mayor.
We're killing here. How will a smart signals project that is being implemented, which I think has a lot of real-time feedback and information as well, does that make some of these kind of off-label features less relevant than just the core LPR or is that apples and oranges?
I would say apples and oranges and maybe Public Works or Engineering could answer that better as far as what the, I know that the, basically the signal systems would flow everything green because it's telling that traffic is backing up and needs to move traffic out of town. This would just be additional for us because it has two modes, basically investigative or to give us information, but in an event of an emergency or an evacuation to assist us, it'd be just another tool to give me an idea of why we're having a backup at Minor and Camino Pablo or Gloriata and Maraga if we're having issues.
I guess the question was in terms of getting a visual, the smart signals don't give any visual feedback, yeah or no? We can just nod from the, I'm sorry.
He wants to share, it's-
I'm sorry, smart signal.
Come on, buddy.
So, yeah, the smart signals project, actually, there's going to be two sets of cameras implemented. The regular ones are the CCTV camera that will be unidirectional, so there will, there'll be four at each intersection looking at the lane traffic movements and everything. In addition to that, I believe we have budget for three pan tilt zoom cameras that will be put in like some of these major intersections that'll allow us to turn and look around. Those will be usually helpful in like specifying incidents, accident or something that we want to take a look at. So those are all, the feed goes through the traffic control center and which will allow us a visual of those, particularly at the intersections.
And so assuming that those are ways in and out of town, we're going to have LPRs that just read license plates and we're going to have smart signals cameras that just look at flows, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, I have one more, sorry, Chief Rossi.
No worries.
What other types of cameras do residents sometimes privately install? I'm, I mean, I'm familiar privately install, I'm familiar with Ring cameras, is there anything else, LPRs, Ring cameras?
Some private companies, I can't tell you any specific companies, but like I have Arlo for my own residence, which has basically like a Ring-type camera where it gives you motion but doesn't really focus on license plates, it's just motion or what's going on. I do know that some higher-end private security systems have the ability to add a license plate reading system, which basically just captures it for the event that something occurs and then it's given to law enforcement to gather that data and then go through our DOJ database to identify where that vehicle is.
Okay, and are any of those other systems, systems that can be connected directly with police or no?
No, all of those are completely privately owned.
Okay. And do you have any sense of how many of those other sorts of cameras, I'll just call them private cameras, like for example, Ring or Ring-like cameras? Do you have any idea how prevalent they are in Arinda?
They are prevalent because they've come up in numerous investigations. I can think of even something that happened on Donald like a year and a half ago, something scary. That incident, we caught a bunch of information on a couple Ring cameras and we're able to piece it all together. So my goal is to basically, anybody within the city that has their own private, they can sign up through the sheriff's office to have their cameras registered, and that just allows us to be able to know somebody at 123 Main Street has cameras, we had an incident, we can contact them, they've already given their information, and that way it cuts down us knocking on doors. We just know we can reach out to those citizens to get that information.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one, what percentage of burglaries do you think are committed with stolen vehicles? Is it most of them, is it?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have a hard number to give you on that, I don't have that available.
That's okay.
I will get that for you.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything more for our staff report?
That's it from us.
Okay, thank you. We had a lot of council questions, so thank you to the members of the public that are here. I now wanted to call a public comment on item H3.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, a huge thank you to Chief Rossi and his staff for all the time they've spent on this in a relatively quick period of time. It, you know, shows a lot, means a lot. Also to City Manager Smith, not only for all her work on the plan, but all her work responding to my emails. Tonight's my fifth public comment I've given on public safety and the fourth one talking about LPRs. Based off the LexisNexis data since March 5th, 2024, when I first said we should expand this, there's been 20 cases of theft from motor vehicles in Arinda, there's been 25 incidents of commercial or residential robbery, and there's been 30 incidents of other theft. There's been two very high-profile incidents in the last couple of months. First, a CVS store getting smashed in, the boards are still up there, and then just across the street at Hilton Head Consignment when there was pepper, the owner was pepper sprayed as well as her customers. However, since last July, when we installed these two cameras in Knickerbocker, none of these incidents have happened there. This comes after years of residential burglaries, thefts, including at my own personal residence. LPR cameras are not a perfect solution, police should agree with that, FLOC Safety themselves would agree with that. These are a tool like any others, but they're a state-of-the-art one. It's technology that I've seen improve dramatically since even over the past year, and it's getting better and better. We're in the Bay Area, we're in a technology meg, we should be leading on these issues, and San Francisco and Oakland already are. And San Francisco's installed over 400 of these cameras. Governor Newsom was touting Oakland installing 480 of them last year. This is a proven solution that more and more people are doing, and I think we really need to consider that if we are going to lag on this issue, that Arinda could become a target, a place where there aren't these cameras, where people can commit these crimes with a little more flexibility than in other neighborhoods, and it's something we should really consider. Our neighborhood has been the benefit, and I urge you to go along with the city's proposal, city staff's proposal and add at least 15 more cameras. I think it's obvious. As the chief mentioned, there are currently more privately funded cameras in Arinda than public ones. This is not just our neighborhood, this is not just some crazy people in Knickerbocker. We're the minority, this is happening across Arinda, and it's a pretty strong public statement that these cameras are wanted and people are willing to put their money where their mouth is in regards to it. I'd request a few additional considerations on this. Number one, please remove any contingencies to funding. This is something that I think we can all get behind doing, this shouldn't be something we're waiting on federal dollars for, it shouldn't have any dependencies. Number two, set a deadline to be installed. Chief said six months, I'd say by the end of the year, and if we're not able to execute by the end of the year, I would say that you reconsider taking on our cameras as well as others. That would prove that the execution is harder than anticipated and gives us enough time to consider whether we need to continue to fund these into the future. A few things based on the questions that were answered, I draw some notes down. Assignment is a one-page document, something really easy to do. Not all the cameras may want to be transferred, people lose access. Our entrance at Stein is not covered. I know the city won't disclose how it is covered, but as she said, area surrounding, there's no camera on Maraga and Stein, so that entrance is not covered. And I would say that it sets the right precedent for community action. Two years of funding and showing a tangible benefit with data is a pretty high bar to class. And then finally, I would say that going through this process and looking at the funding, I noticed some interesting trends since 2010. Back then, 2010 to 2012, police services was actually the biggest line item in the city of Arinda's budget, over 30%, and that has actually been decreased to now less than 20%. And this comes at a time-
Can you wrap, sorry, can you wrap up?
This comes at a time when expenditures have more than doubled, so we need to reprioritize police. We have a great police force, we should be investing in them, and we need to do a little too much, not a little too little. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, sorry. If you could introduce yourself.
My name's Jeff Bloom, I live on El Twainal, and I've, I've seen some of what Evans proposed in some of the discussions here, and I also know that a lot of HOAs have been in discussion to, with a focus on crime where you have, I forget, Neighborhood Watch, for instance, and some of the discussions that the police department has with the neighborhoods are to talk about things like these cameras. So what's going to happen, Arinda Woods went and took the police department's response and put some cameras in where the police department worked with them, and if we don't have a way to adopt that, then it kind of sends a mixed message. And why did we talk about this with Neighborhood Watch, but the city's not going to pay for this in the future? I mean, they went and spent some money. I don't live in Arinda Woods, I have friends there, but I'm looking at this and I understand the dilemma of everybody going out there and installing these cameras and you having a lot of overlap, but I think you should consider putting a public notice out saying, from this point forward, here's the process to approve and get cameras installed and set some things up, but I think we should really consider in the budget, taking over cameras that are installed privately, especially in places that have consulted for Neighborhood Watch and taken the police department's recommendations to install them. Like I said, I've got some friends that were part of that discussion, so I just wanted to give that feedback, and I think a lot of these questions were very good. I understand trying to limit spending, I just wanted to give my feedback, and I think he makes some good points. Some of the other things I have is if you're just dealing with access and egress in various places, how do you pinpoint where the break-in happened if you don't have a little bit more density? Again, I don't know what's been discussed about the placement of these 15 cameras, and I know that it's not in the best interest to publicly put it out there so that criminals can see it, but you can see these cameras when you're driving down the street and see where they are, so it's kind of like not a big secret. But again, I'm just kind of giving a general overview of what I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on item H3? Okay, I want to thank both of our public commentators, and I will close public comment and bring this item back to the council for discussion. I'm sure there's a lot that everyone wants to say, so who wants to go first?
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hoxey.
Okay.
If you want to, otherwise, why not?
Okay.
I, I'm torn between just including the 15 cameras versus including any neighborhood cameras because of the concerns about expansion and the ever-growing, you know, desire for safety and security, which I share, but I liked the idea of saying, well, if we can't get them installed in a certain amount of time, then maybe we should revisit taking on some of the neighborhood cameras that have already been installed. So to give our department, say, a year to get this system up and running and in place, and if it's not adequate at that point, maybe we look back and decide, look again at whether we should include more of these neighborhood cameras as a possibility.
I, well, unless anyone wants to, I can chime in, or does anyone want to chime in? Okay. I, I think, so on the, on the recommendation to approve funding, you know, for the 15 cameras, I fully support that, fully support that, and I think the publicly maintained cameras. I'd like to see, and I think it would be great if we could move forward with those as quickly as possible. I do have full confidence that our, that Chief Rossi and our city manager really wants to see those installed as soon as possible, and so I think they will move forward with those promptly. And I think that, that approval, you know, is one that improves public safety for all of Arinda, and that's our responsibility to do that, and so I'm really pleased with that recommendation. I want to thank them for bringing that to us and for the residents for raising this issue, because beyond that, I feel like if we were to consider taking over any of the privately maintained cameras, and I think there's some, you know, valid issues of concern there with that, but I feel like if we were to do that, we would really need a whole policy around it, and I would want to wait and install these 15 and sort of see how that goes.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Because I might- Because I might, yeah, because we may want to then add more publicly maintained cameras instead, right? That might, we may decide that those 15 are working fine. We may decide that we want to add more, and we may decide that if we want to take over the privately maintained one, we need a policy on how that would be fair and, you know, would it, it would need to be a, for me, it would need to be a camera that is not redundant, right? That by taking it over, we're adding significant value. And I, it sounds like by these 15, that would really cover the ingress and egress points for a lot of Arinda. So that, so my inclination now is to sort of stick with the 15, definitely approve that, move forward on it as quickly as we can. And, you know, if we feel that there need, there is need, and it would add public safety, then consider a policy on privately maintained cameras and adopting them down the road. But I'm not convinced that there's a value added there for public safety beyond the 15, from what we know now. So that's. Anyone else?
So I, I'll tell you why I haven't decided. Because as the city manager knows, I work with a lot of these, you know, traffic safety things, and I am a real stickler for you've got to follow the data. If the data says it's redundant or it's not necessary, if you're not consistent, then you reward, you know, the neighborhood that is the loudest gets public dollars, and a neighborhood that might have a worse problem but isn't very high participating doesn't, and that's not fair. So I really came into this meeting thinking we need to follow the data, but I'm listening carefully and kind of changed my mind. Because what, what I heard tonight that was pretty persuasive is this notion of kind of a public-private partnership, that when neighbors are doing that, that, you know, doesn't benefit everybody, but for their neighborhood, they're willing to organize, to collect, to invest in the cameras, maybe they've put two years in, and we're sharing in the benefit of those cameras. I actually think more safety is super important to Arinda residents. I mean, we are semi-rural, and it can feel like people live in places that are a little more remote. And I recall how the Knickerbocker neighborhood felt really scared when they had what, you know, that, that crime rash was fixed, and they, and the crime hasn't returned because they got the guys doing it. But that was a, that was a time when I think getting those cameras at that time was very comforting for that neighborhood. And I, I'm thinking of a way that if we were to share in the maintenance cost, if there was a way that we could, you know, I just don't know that we're going to have a problem where every third house is buying an LPR camera. I just don't think we're going to have an over-camera problem. And I, but I was listening to what you were saying about like Ring cameras, neighborhood LPRs. But, you know, boy, when I was first elected, I was thinking anything about safety and making people feel safe in their neighborhoods is money well-spent. And if we're co-investing with neighbors, investing their own dollars side by side with us, it just feels like a good public policy, and I would like to not be in a rush, but to maybe find a way to have these sorts of neighborhood partnerships. And so that's what I'm struggling with the most tonight.
Yeah. Councilmember Muji.
I'd like to just add one thought to that, Vice Mayor, and that is, I agree with the high concern on safety, but here's another example. Wilder has hired a private security firm. So where does something like that fit in? Again, I'm not a big believer in the overly slippery slope situation, but when you look at how many times we've had residents advocate for, you know, greater numbers of police and things like that. So if your neighborhood installs a camera, but then your neighborhood decides to hire a private security company to drive around. I mean, I, I just, I do think that that can potentially add all kinds of other questions. I'm personally a very big advocate of the cameras and the technology, and I want to see us have as much as possible. But, but I just want to put that out there as a thought.
And I'm thinking about, maybe we need some sort of policy for, under what circumstances and when, we would take on private cameras in addition to the cameras that we probably will approve tonight for the city to install. So that at least it's an organized thing, and it's not neighborhood by neighborhood. I, I think that if we were to take them on, we would definitely need a policy, because otherwise, how do, how can you, you've got to do it in a fair way, right? And also, it's got to, you know, we, this is public money, and I'm not comfortable spending, spending it in a manner that doesn't benefit the public at large. And, and, and public safety is really, really important, but those dollars, when we put them to public safety, I want to make sure they're really protecting the public in the best way possible, and we're getting the most bang for our buck with those funds, right? So I'm not saying we stop at 15 necessarily. I'm saying we approve that. My recommendation is we approve that and, and see how it goes. And, you know, if there's a recommendation that comes that we, we need more, it may be that once those are installed, we think we need more publicly maintained cameras in other areas, or we think that would benefit. But again, we're looking at prevention, and we're looking at crime solving, right? And this isn't the only way we provide public safety. We have a lot of other public safety needs that we want to meet. So I think, I think we have to use those dollars wisely and, and to the extent we take over private cameras in neighborhoods, by all means, if there's a private camera, privately maintained camera in a neighborhood where we're looking for more coverage, I think we should absolutely explore that public-private partnership. But for now, for now, I'd like to see us approve the 15 and move forward with that installation as quickly as possible. But I, Councilmember Riley.
Yes. My thought is I'm concerned about the domino effect or the slippery slope. It's a really strong example of what Wilder's doing, and, you know, Arinda Woods or Sleepy Hollow could hire their own private car too. So I guess I would move slowly on that, and tonight just approve the 15. And one other thought I'm having is with 15 more or maybe more than that, and, you know, over time, we add more to the smaller neighborhoods that feed into the bigger ones, we might find that neighborhoods are, that have cameras privately owned, reevaluate whether or not they need to continue having those contracts and having that footage. I mean, maybe, maybe they'd say, okay, we got plenty of coverage on the egress and the, so we'll see.
That's a, that's a great point. And also, can, there was some burglary statistics out there, so I just wanted to confirm. Can, can you provide either city manager or Chief Rossi? That was one of the questions I forgot to ask, even though I asked so many. How many burglaries have we had in the, in the last?
So in the first
The last year or two.
Five months of 2025, we've had one.
One residential burglary?
One residential burglary. And previous years, there was higher numbers, and some of that was attributed to a group that was working the area and has subsequently been arrested.
Okay.
And so we saw a decrease as a result of, you know, investigative work and bringing them to justice.
Okay. And not to minimize that, one is still too many, but
Yes, but it's definitely a different, we're having a different conversation in 2025 than we've had in the previous years around the issue of residential burglaries.
Councilmember Muji.
I just wanted to ask staff if you had a comment to Mr. Dreyer's comment about the percentage of, of importance we're putting on the police budget. I'm not sure that your calculation is quite the right perspective.
So I think, looking back at last year, the current year budget, I think it's 16.8 million is the overall general purpose general fund budget, of which 5.8 million is for police services, so it's just slightly under 30%. But I think next, and Doug can cover it as part of his budget proposal, but I think it gets closer to 30% as a result of, you know, increases and
I mean, we have years where the budget varies quite substantially due to some of our infrastructure needs. But in the 10 years that I've been on the council, the police services has been pretty steady eddy at a third of our city budget.
And I will note, we are also adding the additional deputy to the police services contract, which would be in place in 2025. The request went in a few months ago. It's going to take several months to get, to get that position filled. That'll be a daytime officer who could be working more with the communities and with the schools and working on our disaster preparedness and evacuation planning efforts. So we will have additional support on police services, and so we'll see. That's been reflected in the budget as well. So if you see the number somewhat higher than it was in previous years, that's a result of their cost of living adjustments and then additional staff support.
Thank you. More discussion?
I just want to say, Mr. Dreyer, I really do appreciate, I think we, I think I was the mayor when your family had the very unfortunate incident. And I think we remain extremely empathetic. I, you know, I, I think all of us understand how traumatic that that is and how violating that feels. We don't want to see any kind of crime happen, and I applaud your neighborhood for, you know, for taking action, as I think a lot of others have. And, and a lot of us, you know, all have other, you know, things at our home, personal security. You know, I have cameras at my home, and so do most people in Arinda. So, so, you know, I think there's a great deal of effort put on, you know, trying to, to be preventative. I, my biggest concern is not that, that you're, I mean, I think what you've done is incredibly well-intentioned, and I'm glad it's benefited the neighborhood. But I'm, I'm just concerned again about this, you know, the taking on more than the city can really handle in terms of, you know, adopting something from your neighborhood and then being faced with, you know, potentially five or six or eight other neighborhoods and, and as well as these other kinds of services. You know, in many respects, I'm almost surprised the Wilder people haven't asked us to, you know, be paying for their private security because they're, you know, concerned about our level of police coverage. So I just, it's more a matter of the slippery slope aspect of what the city can, can afford. And, and I have advocated all along for these city cameras, so I certainly am going to support, support that. So, but I, I do, I do very much appreciate what you've done. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not wanting to vote no lightly in the sense that I don't think it's important what your neighborhood has accomplished.
Thank you. Any other commentary?
Sounds like we have a consensus. I'm not sure I can articulate it, but if you guys want to put forward a motion, it sounds like we're
Well, I don't, this item is a provide direction item, so I don't know if we need a formal motion. But if we have direction that we include the 15 cameras in the budget, which will be presented to you on the next item, when the Assistant City Manager will get up and present that to you. And then if the direction is to continue to evaluate, look at the success of the installation of the 15 cameras, and then maybe report back to the city council in a year's time on the progress we're making on that. And if that's resulting in maybe making neighborhoods feel more safe and secure, and we can try to address if at that point the council wants us to evaluate the private camera cost sharing, we could propose policies in a program to do something like that.
I think that would be, that would be wonderful. And, and hopefully the, as I'm looking at Mr. Dreyer, because I want to credit you for, you know, encouraging us to also get, get these cameras installed quickly, which I know, I think we really want to do. So, thank you. Right?
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, yeah, so I think we do have consensus on that. Yes? Okay. I'm seeing everyone nodding, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
So that concludes item H3. And since we took that out of order, that takes us back to item H1, which is the proposed biannual budget for the next two years.
So Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, this item will be presented by Doug Alessio, our Administrative Services Director/Assistant City Manager. And before he gets started, I just want to publicly thank both Doug and Bhavna on the finance staff for their putting together this budget. It is, I've worked in another agency where the level of detail that's in the proposed budget is nowhere near what the work that Doug and Bhavna have put together for you this evening. And I think it'll hopefully make it easier for adoption when we come back to you in June. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to publicly thank Doug and Bhavna for all of their work. All right?
Thank you very much. Is there a clicker for the? Nope. Miss, this is a clicker. That's it? All right. That's different. It's a new clicker. That was, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. I am Doug Alessio, your Assistant City Manager/Administrative Service Director. The item I'm presenting tonight is the proposed biannual budget for fiscal years 2025, '26, and 2026, '27. Before I get started on that topic, there, I feel compelled to mention that tonight on the consent was the third quarter finance update. And I'd just like to mention, as a segue into this topic, the results of the examination through the third quarter were, were on track in 2024, '25. The budget was well put together. We should exceed revenue expectations by a little bit and probably come in a little bit under expenditures. So we're now in May. I can, you know, virtually see the end of the fiscal year from here, and we're likely to end the year in, in good financial condition where we add about $1 million to the general fund fund balance. That'll be a mixture of revenue beyond our expectations and slightly less expenditures. So that's pretty good news, and it's a good segue into the budget that we're proposing for the next two years. If we could, oh, green button. Nope. Green button is the laser. Oh, that, green button, back.
There we go.
Great. So budget cycle in background. Again, the city of Arinda adopts a biannual budget, which is the industry best practice. You need to look at more than just the year in front of you. It's better to adopt a multi-year budget, and two years is fairly standard for most cities. The budget, so tonight, there's a separate item for the capital improvement plan, which is a plan that covers a five-year period. And so the budget in front of you tonight, the operating budget includes the first two years of the CIP budget is incorporated into this budget. So if you adopt this budget on June 3rd, you'll be appropriating funds for the capital improvement plan for the first two years of the plan, along with an operating budget. Okay? The budget was developed, it supports the council's strategic priorities. And the budget that we're going to propose provides a similar level of service as the current year budget, with a few exceptions, which I'll try to highlight. So the schedule that I've displayed is the actual, all the steps in the budget process. It starts with a, a meeting to discuss priorities. That happened in February and March. Several meetings in May, including a review by the Planning Commission for consistency with the general plan, by the SSTOC, by the Finance Advisory Committee, and some other groups. So this is the first public meeting about the budget. There's going to be other opportunities for public review and input into the budget. They're on the calendar that's displayed. And come June 3rd, we're looking to actually present a budget that you'll adopt, okay? And incorporate any changes that you may suggest tonight into that document. So just to get to it, this is a chart that's a high-level summary of the citywide budget. This is all funds. So, you know, you've got year one and year two. I think an important item to note is in year one, we're proposing transfers out of 2.6 million. If that's one-time items, so if you just look at the total sources of 18.5 million and total uses of about 18.3 million, we have a operational surplus of about $265,000 in the first year. So there's a little bit of wiggle room, and there's a reason for that. So there's a little bit of wiggle room. And there's a reason for that, we'll discuss later. In the second year, you'll see that there's still an operational surplus of about $160,000 or so. So that's general purpose, general fund revenues are about $160,000 higher than our expenses are, that are incorporated into the document. All right? See? So one of the things that you might notice here is that, oops, that in the other funds category, we have operating expenditures also. So operating expenditures happen in, mostly in the general fund, but there's some operating expenditures that occur in Measure R, and Stormwater Utility Assessment Fund, and other places in the budget. And if you look at this close enough, you'll see, hey, the operating expenditures in year one are about $900,000 more than the operating expenditures in year two for the non-general fund. That is primarily in the Measure R budget. We have a couple of one-time expenditures that are programmed in there. There's about a half a million dollars for storm drain mapping and study program. There is $285,000 that is for fire fuel mitigation incentive program from the original $400,000. We've, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have, you know, dispersed about $115,000, leaving the 285. So that's shown as an operational expenditure Measure R, along with about $140,000 in consulting costs to help develop a new emergency operation plan and training program for emergency operations for staff. So you'll see that the operating budget goes down in year two. That's a little counterintuitive. I wanted to explain it. Usually, you see a progression each year of a little bit of an increase. In this case, that's kind of glaring $9,000 reduction. That's a result of those three operating items in Measure R. Okay? Some of the highlights is it's a balanced budget in both years, when it maintains the current programs and service levels. Staffing level is to remain constant. There's no regular staffing positions being requested to be added during the two-year budget cycle. Again, it includes the storm drain mapping, includes resources for emergency operations plan update and training. It includes a crossing guard contract that's programmed actually into the police budget for $120,000. We have an offsetting reimbursement of revenue of $60,000 coming from the school district to pay for half of that. And other sort of changes in service levels is an increased leverage of technology to improve efficiency. You guys already had a big conversation about what that might look like in the police department tonight. But there's other places where that's happening. The planning department is in the process of getting a cloud permitting software updated. We have records management software and some finance items that we're looking to get up and running during the year that are sort of outside of the standard program and service levels from the year before. We have a couple of challenges. You're going to hear when I talk about revenues. We're really doing conservative revenue estimates because the global political uncertainty, there's a little bit of hesitancy for major purchases and for what the economic outlook is like. That affects my projections for property taxes, for sales taxes, for interest income. So that's a major factor in the development of this budget. So you'll notice we have fairly flat projections for revenue, trying to reflect the uncertainty that's going on around us. The other item is that obviously, we have a labor agreement that expires on June 30 this year. We're in negotiations with the labor group. We hope to have a successor agreement in place before the end of the current contract. And although we projected some costs in here, I believe that we'll need some of that additional operating surplus we talked about in order to get all the way there. So that's one of the reasons we made sure there was a gap. We still need to wrap up negotiations, and those costs are not reflected in the budget document being presented to you. Okay? So, so about the proposed transfers in year one, on page 75 of the 2324 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, is a nice chart that talks about the city's fund balances. The city council has a policy that will have a contingency reserve, emergency reserve of 50% of our operating budget. That is to be held at all times. That is about eight, some odd million dollars right now. If the budget gets adopted, is presented, that will need to increase. The budget's about a $1.8 million increase. So the reserve will need to increase about $975,000. So that would reduce the unassigned balance that currently exists of about $5 million. Okay? So with that, about four million that's left, we're recommending $685,000 be transferred to the Risk Management Internal Service Fund, to apprentice reserves. You may recall that this past fall was part of the close of fiscal year 2324. We had a couple of settlements. We had the Rain's Wassa Water Creek settlement. We had the OC stipulation. Both of those costs came out of the Risk Management Internal Service Fund. On top of that, just like what's occurring in everybody's personal life, the city's insurance costs have gone up considerably. Most of that occurred last year, and we never made an adjustment for those costs in our budget. And so we drew down on reserves to cover them. So this transfer will replenish that. Our current operating budget has programmed in the higher cost of insurance going forward. But the $685,000 transfer will restore the funding back there and create a stable risk management reserve. Then we're also recommending that we transfer 2 million of that on a, on, excuse me, unassigned general fund balance to the capital improvement fund for future CIP needs. Okay? That means that roughly 1.4 million will remain on programmed in the general fund, and we'll probably add about $1 million to that. So there's an additional 2.4 million of unassigned general fund balance that's available if an emergency arises, or some program or item comes forward that you really feel is important. And so there's resources available for that. Okay? So, this is a chart of citywide revenues, all funds. So again, I think one of the important notes here is taxes make up 57% of our revenues in '25, '26, and 64% in '26, '27. A lot of that has to do, and you'll see this data flow through the presentation, because of the other revenues and transfers that happened in fiscal year '25, '26, it sort of skews that data. So property tax looks like it's 39% because there's this huge transfer we're doing. When really, it's, if, without that transfer, it's more like the historic 45% of our revenue. So that's the big difference between the two years. The revenues are quite similar, but that, that one big variance there has to do with, with the transfers, because the transfers are actually a revenue for one of our city funds, right? They're an expense for the general fund, but they're going to be a revenue for Fund 700 and for the risk management fund. So that's sort of why it looks like there's so much more revenue in the first year. Okay? You can ask questions at any time, by the way, if you have them. You don't need to wait till the end. Yes?
I'm glad. If you go back one slide, I believe, you said at that last line, it says 1.4, and you said.
No. I apologize. The word million is not there. 1.4 million.
You said it was 2.4.
Well, because 1.4, and then at the end of this fiscal year, I anticipate we'll be adding another million because of the way this year ends. So this is the data at the end of '23, '24, which was the beginning of this fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in. So at the beginning of the fiscal year we're in, there was 5 million. And so 1.4 would remain. But come June 30 or July 1, another million will get added to that. So this chart displays just general fund for '25, '26. It's really, I think, visually stunning how much we rely on property tax here. It's not a bad thing. Property tax is an extremely stable revenue source. It downturns in the economy. This revenue source lags way before, way behind any real trend. So if we hit some really bad times, it'll take the correction quite a bit of time to hit us in our pocketbook, where sales tax is a lot more mirror what's happening in the economy. So not a bad place to be, but a whole lot of property tax that we rely on. Fees and charges make up about 22% of our general fund revenue. Mine share of that is park and rec fees, in case you were wondering. And then the smaller piece is development. So and then you see that rents and interest, we did pretty good last year, and we're projecting, although a slight decrease, we're expecting interest rates to go down a little bit over the course of the budget cycle. We're still going to be performing much higher than we have over the past half dozen to dozen years. So I'm really excited about that. This is the same data, but for '26, '27, again, a big property tax, a lot smaller sales tax, and fees and charges are our next big piece of revenue. These projections, again, conservative, relatively flat. Property tax, I'm only showing growing at 2.5%. The, it grows by 2% by statute unless there's a recession. Historically here in Arinda, it's grown by much more than that, sometimes by up to 6% or 7%, 8% sometimes. But with the uncertainty around insurance and economy as a whole, we've just programmed in really conservative numbers for property tax. Sales tax, we worked with our consultant to do the projections. They, you know, are anticipating a decline slight in our first year, and then sales tax should start to tick back up in year two. And again, the other big adjustment in revenue has been interest earnings. So we're expecting to have a really good year in '25, '24, '25, and we toned it down slightly from what we expect this year for the next two years. So the rent and interest number is again, higher than it has been in the past few years. So that's good news. All right. This is citywide, and I just found this was interesting information. We spend anywhere from about a quarter to a third of our budget on CIP. And, you know, that's a pretty good chunk of our resources going towards capital improvement over the two years. So, all right. So the general fund, operating expenses by departments. So again, this is impacted by the non-departmental number, includes transfers out. So the discussion earlier tonight about, hey, we're spending less on police, we do historically spend about 33% of our budget on police services. If we didn't have the 2.6, almost $2.7 million of transfers, we would be spending about 33% on police services. But that huge non-departmental number skews everything else a little bit smaller. If you look at the next fiscal year, of course, police services is up at about one-third of our general fund budget is spent on police services. Okay? The other department that we spend quite a bit on is Public Works. Realize that some of that has to do with the reorganization. So in the previous budgets, we had maintenance that occurred in the park, rec, and facilities department, and some maintenance that occurred in Public Works. We did the reorganization that got completed in fiscal year '24, '25. And so the Public Works budget is a bit bigger, and Park and Rec is a bit smaller because they're no longer doing maintenance. And so it'll look a little bit different going into the future. All right. So this is a general fund operating budget by expense category, salaries, benefits, contractors, materials, supplies, special departmental expense, and vehicle expense. Okay? Special departmental expense, brief explanation, that would be an expense that's specific to a department, so like the clerk's office, elections, right? So that would fall in special departmental expense. If you had the Park and Rec Department, you have costs for instructors, or for uniforms, or for referees. Those are special departmental expense. And administrative services, that's banking fees and credit card processing, items like that. Okay? And then the transfer out, again, in the first year shows pretty large, and the second year, transfers out drops to zero. Right? And this gives you a more reflective look at how we're traditionally without the one-time transfers, which is about 38% of our budget spent on salary and benefits, 45% on contractors, materials and supplies, and special department expense, sort of wrap out the budget. Vehicle expenses relatively small, and that's setting aside money for future vehicle purchases in our Vehicle Internal Service Fund. So this chart sort of gives you progression over time of general fund by expense category, salaries, benefits, contractors. So the first column is '22, '23 actual, second column, the orange one, is '23, '24 actual. The green middle column is '24, '25's budget. The blue column, and then the agenda column, respectively, are the next two years. So you can see in salaries and benefits, upward growth. You can see the difference between the '23, '24 actual, and there's a bit of a jump to the '24, '25 budget. That's because we always budget for full staffing. Right? And undoubtedly, during the year, we'll experience some vacancies and end up with some salary savings. So that's the reason for that bit of a jump in, of that one year. But the rest of this is indicative trend data that you could see. And then the last column is obviously transfers. The very large transfer in '23, '24 had to do with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And again, that was a year where staff made recommendations to take the unassigned general fund balance and put it to work. Okay? So. Caught up? This is the same data, just numerical instead of graphically displayed. You know, I found it was interesting. Materials and supplies jumped up in '23, '24. It's almost like we miscategorize something as special departmental expense trend-wise. So, but just to give you the historical perspective on where our general fund spending has gone. Okay? Staffing, I mentioned. Citywide staffing's remaining constant from the '24, '25 level. We currently have 40.5 full-time equivalent positions in the budget, and it will remain that way over the next two years unless a decision is made before the end of that time period. Just a heads up, there are two limited duration positions which are set to expire during the proposed budget cycle. We have programmed those positions for the entire budget cycle, and we'll make decisions about whether to continue through the budget cycle with them, or to let the positions expire on their dates. So then, the other pieces, although it's staffing, they're not regular full-time employees. We use temporary employees for a number of things. So there's So there's a fairly significant enhancement in temporary staff that's proposed in this budget. Some of it has to do most notably with facility attendance. This is in support of the reorganization where we moved maintenance in the public works. Some of those maintenance workers were doing facility attendant work. Well, now we need to, to hire a bunch of facility attendants. And then I thought in, in important thing to mention was we're also budgeting for halftime GIS technician. So super excited about that. I think investing in, in GIS is an important thing for us to be doing. In the past, we used to share a full-time employee with La Marinda three cities. And, and this was just seemed like an easier way to make sure we could get this done without having to convince our two neighbors it was important where we get to control the person because they're our, our temporary employee and they're not a consultant. So we think this is a step in the right direction. GIS is such a great tool. Once we, we get better data and mapping in, we'll find all sorts of uses for it. This is what my experience has been. So pretty excited about that. Within the budget is a consolidated measure R summary. And, and it goes into pretty good detail about what we're doing in measure R. I sort of covered already the big anomaly. You could see in the operating expense shoots up quite significantly in the proposed 25, 26 budget and then drops back down to about a million dollars a year. So measure R, you know, is actually doing quite well, is financially healthy. We take in about $4 million a year. We spend about a million dollars a year on operations and the, the rest is available and builds into fund balance. I believe the CIP has a fairly significant capital expense program for year one, the 3.5 million, and then drops off significantly in year two to under a million dollars of support from measure R in our capital improvement program. So that's a significant change that should be noted. So with that, the next steps, which were highlighted on one of the first slides is the planning commission will review the CIP for conformity on May 29th. The independent library tax oversight and the finance advisory committee will have a chance to review the budget on May 29th. And the supplemental sales tax oversight committee will review it their meeting on May 14th. There's an opportunity for you to ask questions or get clarifications. We're looking for you to provide input on any adjustments you'd like to see that we can incorporate into the final budget when we bring it back for adoption on June 3rd. That's my presentation.
That was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much, Director Alessio. Questions? I just, I mean, I also want to say the materials that we were provided were, were really exceptional and comprehensive and detailed and understandable. So from my perspective, thank you so much. For it encompassed, took most of my Sunday, but I'm appreciative for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I don't actually have any questions after the report, but maybe others do.
I don't mean to seem uncurious, but I spent an hour with Doug yesterday and I have no further questions.
Anyone? Okay, well first, let's go through questions and then, or you can, if it's a question, comment.
Well, I, I probably in my family, Doug, I could be accused of being the, you know, biggest worry word or whatever. This is more of a, this is nothing to do with tonight's budget, which is excellent. My big, my big questions, and again, you touched on it. My big questions are kind of risks for the future, so to speak. And you talked about taxes and property taxes and interest rates and all those come to mind really easily. But one that's kind of keeps creeping into mind that I would hope that our advocate firm would keep monitoring for us. And that is, as, as the federal administration keeps making very massive changes, one of the things that is worrisome to me is like, if you go back to say minor road, right? In the end, we recovered virtually all of that money from state and federal disaster reimbursements, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. What I'm really concerned about is the possibility, and of course it's, would affect way more than Arinda. But I'm really concerned about kind of the longer term risk of monitoring. Is FEMA really going away? Is this kind of funding really going away? And just, I guess my thing is we can't do anything about it. We don't know the answer. But, but continuing to monitor it because our budgets as Arinda look radically different if you have a serious infrastructure disaster. And this is totally aside from wildfire. This is more like the minor road kind of thing. But if you don't get those millions back, that's a whole different picture. So it's not anything to do with the current situation. It's just kind of stay on top of it.
So we do actively monitor what's happening, not just with the federal government, but the state. I think we haven't heard a lot about the state budget, which is surprising to me. And I, I'm concerned about that and, and where their budget's heading. And traditionally, when the state ends up with budget problems, they, they make it local problem. So we, we do actively monitor that. We all belong to professional organizations that help us keep in touch with the various things that are happening that affect our industry. So we do try to monitor those things very closely. And anything we see coming that we think is going to be impactful and affect our ability to operate by the plan that we're presenting, we'll be in front of you recommending, you know, alternatives and corrective courses of action.
Council member, Foxy.
This is my first time, so I appreciate the thoroughness of your, your report and I too poured over it. But things are presented differently than I'm used to from the school district. So I had a few questions. For instance, do we, I know we do, but where do you track attorney fees and looking at them year over year or?
Sure. So attorney fees, there's a department in the general fund that's specifically the attorney's office. And so in the budget book, if you were to look at page 37 is specifically the city attorney's budget, right? So a majority of the city's attorney's budget lives in the general fund. But there's some costs that get borne by measure R, by gas tax, by the general plan, long-term planning fund and by affordable housing. So there's a whole section devoted to the city attorney's budget and, and what's happening there. Again, it.
And I guess just more generally, obviously unless the council were to pass a, you know, go to the voters for new sales tax or new partial tax, there's, there aren't many ways that we're going to change the revenue structure, but we do have some control over some of the expenditures. So my question to you is, you know, do you see the expenditures in line with, they seem to be with prior years and the percentages that you would expect, or are there areas that we should either be spending more money or less money on?
So yeah, I believe the budget were percentages fairly in line with the trend data. The, the last several years, and if you look at the third quarter finance report, you'll, you'll see we're trending right on prior years. I think our expenses are a little slow in the current year because of some AP processing. I think we're a couple of weeks behind where we were last year. So I think in 24, 25, our revenues are going to be slightly higher than the, the trend shows. But what we're projecting forward is a, is a healthy operating budget where we'll be able to provide the current level of service and programs we're providing. And we should be able to come in under the budget that we traditionally do. When I first got here, the, the budget was, was together by somebody else who was pretty large. We, we came in under the operating budget by several million dollars the first two years I was here. That's way too much for such a small budget for me. If we come in several hundred thousand under budget is, is more appropriate based on our, our, our general fund budget size. And so this year I suspect we'll come in, you know, about a hundred thousand or so under our, our operating budget. We'll come in about a million over.
Thank you.
In revenue.
It's 9:57. So I think since we still have another agenda, I'm in the CIP report after this. I'd like to move to extend the meeting until 10:30.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's unanimous and hopefully we really can end by 10:30.
We, we're going to do our best to get you there.
Thank you very much.
Was there any, any more questions?
Do you have any public comment or?
Yeah, for, let me ask if there is any public comment on this agenda item. There's no members of the public, so. I will close public comment. And do we have any further discussion on this item? Again, this is an excellent budget. I just, yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to add my two cents too. I just think it's fantastic and so easy to understand. So appreciate it. Did a great job.
Yeah. All right. And now we will move on to agenda item H2, which is our proposed draft capital improvement plan, CIP.
Scott and I spoke prior to him coming out there. We're going to keep this brief because we know that we want to move things along. And it's, it's an accompanying type of document to the budget. So hopefully we can move through it relatively quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. And I'm lucky that I followed Mr. Alessio's great presentation because he sets out a nice framework and explains so many things. The downside is that mine won't come out as good as his in terms of the concepts and the graphs and so forth. But in any case, as, as he explained, we do a two-year budget. So that's the emphasis also with the CIP, but it does cover a five-year period. So the two years coming up and then three years past that. Plus then we show, as you may have seen in the documents provided, the 24, 25 fiscal year that's now ending. And then we also show, because many capital projects go on several years, we show prior expenditures in the leftmost column of project details, if, if you really want to get into that level. And overall, for the period in question, the two-year period, we have about 53 projects and $21 million to be expended for these projects in that two years. And that doesn't necessarily complete all the projects, but again, looking at those years in questions. In most cases, we try to complete a budget like a, an annual paving project. We want to complete that in one year, but very often it's going to encompass two years. We have a design phase that's going to be usually before the construction period, which you often want in summer for things like paving projects. Another thing to point out, just following Mr. Alessio's presentation with respect to measure R, capital expenditures. One reason for that blip that he mentioned of going up and then going down is we're, we're finishing up the so-called category A storm drain project. So that's, I think around a, I want to say two to three million dollar that travels through that period. So we'll be in construction most likely this, this coming summer and then a little into the following year. A few other points that were in my staff report, we have included, again, this is based on feedback. We were presenting at the April 15th meeting, the concepts, some project ideas, got some valuable feedback. From that, we, we are pulling into the proposed projects, the number 5038, the Moraga Way widening and path study. And that would be a project that we jointly pursue with Moraga and talks are underway now. And we've allotted 400,000 from measure R to fund that. And this would be again primarily a study because it's such a complex matter to look at. How, how much right of way do we need to acquire? What are the different conceptual plans as far as the engineering, the environmental issues and so forth? Again, the goal is to come up with improved pedestrian and bicycle routes from Moraga all the way up to Highway 24 ultimately. But then also to look at the concept of an evacuation route and then an emergency lane or even to help facilitate potential contra flow. Another project to point out is the Wilder Downtown Multi-Use Path. Based on your feedback and basically because of the high projected project cost of 20 million, we've kind of lowered that priority. And we're showing it still in the CIP, but very much contingent on grant funding. So we're not allotting any money to that at this time. Also, the project number 4191, which is the Glorietta Raised Crosswalks project. We did get a TDA grant fund and at the time we applied for it in good faith, we were not anticipating this crossing guard arrangement that's now coming up. And we're very confident that will solve one of the primary problems there. So we're recommending at this time to essentially not go forward with that project, not accept the grant, which would have been for 200,000. But we still would have had to pay about 100,000 out of gas tax or other local funds to provide that project. Again, the, the primary justification for the project was to facilitate safe crossing at that locate, at that location Martha and Glorietta during the peak school drop-off and pickup hours.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Because I'm still concerned that there's a lot of crossing that occurs at that intersection that's not at peak drop-off hours that, that school is a hub for a lot of different types of activities on the weekends and after school and that it still might benefit to have that safer raised crosswalk there. Because, you know, families are parking other places for their kids to come to a soccer game or whatever on the field. And that maybe is, is something we really should be thinking about doing around all the schools because the issues of, of use of the school sites on off-hours is, it, they, they can have quite a bit of weekend use. And so I'm concerned that if we, once we, we've got some funding to look into this, we could almost use it as a pilot to see what it can do to increase safety at that intersection. And I hate to see us drop it, you know, it, it's instead of in lieu of that feels to me like it should be in, in addition to it. It's just another safety measure for students and families and neighbors.
What I want to do is just put a pause on that till we come back to comment because we might all have responses, but if there's a question for Director Christie about it now.
Well, okay, I, I don't know how.
Just so that we go through the staff report and questions and public comment and then we'll come back to discussion about it?
That's fine. That's fine.
Unless there is a, I don't want to, if there is a question about it, I just want to make sure that, okay.
I guess the only question is, is, is that $200,000 plus 100,000 the cost for actually doing the raised crosswalk? Or is that the cost for, you know, studying it or something else?
That would be the full project cost, design plus construction. Okay, very good. And one other point is the fund contribution from general fund to the so-called Fund 700, the capital improvement fund. Mr. Alessio mentioned the recommendation is $2 million in 25, 26 to that. In my expenditure and fund balance sheets, I show 1 million by mistake. Cause at one point we were looking at distributing it to different funds. So just wanted to point out that that's something we'll correct, of course, for the final document. And then a few other details would be the, the concept in, in the planning from our side is to balance the sources for different projects, keeping in mind the restrictions on them so that we can end up at the end of every year in the five-year period with a non-zero balance, hopefully comfortably above that by some margin. The, the challenge is this year, perhaps not surprisingly because of some of the decreased revenue forecast. decreased revenue forecasts and so forth, are growing at a slower rate would be for gas tax, for drainage impact fees and for the solid waste fee. So that would be funds two hundred, two-ten and three-three-five. We've been fairly conservative in the forecast for revenue. But even so, the fund balances are dropping and you'll see at the bottom line end of your balance, you know, sometimes you're down to twenty thousand dollars, a pretty low number just to balance it out. And then I can briefly go through the, uh, just a few of the key pages in case there's questions. And this is just the table of contents. Uh, then the first part is just the general description of, and it, it mirrors in some ways the use of funds that, um, that Mr. Alessio covered. Then this is the, in these sheets, you'll see the overall projects by category. By and large, I think it's eighty-eight percent of the projects are transportation and drainage related. And then after that, you have, um, city buildings and then park improvements. And then this graph shows the funding source summaries as far as the expenditures by fund by year. And then following that, you'll come across individual sheets for each fund. It show the project uses down on the bottom parts of the page. And then in the upper parts, you'll see operating costs. Well, you'll see revenue. I'm sorry. There'll be revenues to start. Then you'll have the capital projects by number shown as a line item. And then the very last section, you'll find operating costs. So that would be, for instance, for Fund One Oh Six, as Mr. Alessio mentioned, for the operating budget, there's, I want to say it's around a million. So that number will appear. We reconcile that, so to speak, with finance. So we're all on the same page. So each sheet will show you and you, you can see as you get to different funds, what the balances are at the end of the year. Um, the, the one page, I don't want to make you dizzy going through this, but this is the one here at the, um, Fund Seven Hundred, which is on the right-hand side. And I'll fix this for the final presentation. You have to go to the next page to see the bottom line number at the top there. So it's just kind of a format error, so to speak. And then following that, these are all the detailed pages for each project. There'll be projects that are already completed in there just because there's activity in the twenty-four, twenty-five year that we cover. In cases where we don't have full project funding in the priority status, it'll say partially funded. Or in some cases, it may say unfunded in the case of, say, the Wilder pedestrian pathway. It's in there mainly as a placeholder for grant purposes. So in any case, you, you'll have these, uh, detailed sheets for each projects covering the the year we're closing out plus the forward five years. And then at the back of the document, you'll have glossary, acronyms, descriptions of funds, and then the very last part is the so-called unfunded project list. It'll have certain longer-term projects in some cases that are part of CCTA lists for regional and projects that require federal or state funding. I think it's called the uh, CCTPL, the Transportation Plan, uh, in any case. And there's other projects in there through the years that we've gathered where there's interest and that, again, council can always choose to bring one of those forward and fund it or partially fund it for consideration. So that, that's included. That covers kind of the basics and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember G.
Thank you very much, Scott. I have two questions and they're sort of related. So I'm gonna ask both of them together and then let you answer them because I think they're kind of connected. But, um, when you look down, when you look at all the totals, so the you're actually showing expending less in the capital improvement program in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year than the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes.
Yeah. And my question then relates to my other question, which is how far into the columns, like if you take twenty, if you take the expenditures that you're showing for twenty-five, twenty-six, I assume those numbers are pretty much all quote firm? And is, and my question is, is the, the next column, the twenty-six, twenty-seven, are the expenditures we're showing, are those monies that are already for real or are there grants that are still like pending or expected to be applied for something? And is that what's bringing the, I know it's not our need. Our need for capital improvement is endless. So are we, is this just capturing numbers that are firm and there's the possibility that we would also have grants that could materialize or? Do you understand how, am, am I confusing you?
No. There, there are some areas in there where there's grant funding that's not been received. There, there's not too many of those. And I've tried to highlight them again in that funding designation on each sheet. Off the top of my head, there's the, let's see, for that Wilder pathway project, there's federal, I'm sorry, there's grant funding, I think we showed is federal. The, I don't know if I have the number offhand, but it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars are shown there that we haven't received. So there's a few cases like that, but I would say overall it's, it's not a significant amount.
So then why, why are we actually showing that we're gonna expend less in the CIP in the second fiscal year? Is it because we're, we have uncertainty as to where the money might come from? Because like I said, we have lots of needs.
Right, um. There's a few reasons. One would be, one of the blips again that we're seeing in, in this coming year is the finishing up of the category A storm drain project. Another one would be the Smart Signals project, which is a big number, relatively big number. I mean, like one point eight million. Does that sound right?
Yeah, no, it's a big number. Yeah.
So, so that's why you're seeing that higher expenditure in that particular year. Then the other part of it is, is I think just resources from the standpoint of what, what we kind of have in the books now in design. I mean, we could probably put more in there, but we don't really. And, and we could always do that next year. I mean, that's the beauty of having the every year revisiting this so we can then get more accuracy as we make progress.
But you're feeling reasonably confident that the numbers that are shown for the second fiscal year are monies we would have or?
Right, that it's, it's secure. There, there's a few exceptions, but, and again, they're all, they're all budgeted. I mean, they're, they're based on the fund balances, money we know we have. Uh, the, the unknown would be contractor prices, bids.
Right. So if. Okay. Wait, go ahead. I, either way, my, my fear, but I don't know that you can answer this or any of us can answer this is that since we don't know the cost of materials, right, and how that or labor and how that might increase, given what's happening on the national scale. Can our projected, um, infrastructure projects, the cost on those could? Uh, again, I'm also just nervous that they could go through the roof. It goes back, but that's more of an overall anxiety more than anything that I think you can realistically address in the.
Well, so, so for most, again, the, the majority of projects are transportation drainage.
Right.
The majority of the costs are construction. A lot of that's labor and then the kind of materials usually homegrown from the standpoint, it's oil, asphalt and cementous materials and so forth. Now there's going to be exceptions for, again, building projects where you have to get devices that may be made overseas. There's that unknown. And you're right, as we go, there's that risk. We've tried to be conservative. And if we get high bids, we, we can always rebid it or push it off to some extent.
Right. Thank you. Other questions? Um, then I will open public comment on this item. I see no members of the public and we have no cards, so I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Um, and I know that, uh, Councilmember Hoxey, you had a, a comment earlier.
I was, I, I am concerned about removing that raised crosswalk from the CIP because I do think that the schools are hubs for activity on, at times that are not going to be covered by crossing guards. And that for, it would be interesting, I, I think it would be good for us to have those, that additional, um, safety in place for those other times. And it would also give us the opportunity to see if it has a positive effect or whether it's something we should look into at other schools.
Any discussion on that? I guess.
My reaction is, uh, having done a lot of youth sports at Glorietta also, uh, given that there's no car traffic generally during the youth sports hours of the day, they're not going to walk to the crosswalk and cross at the crosswalk. They just kind of cross. So I would um, just revert that back to Public Works for a recommendation, but my personal experience would not, uh, direct that that would be money well spent.
I, I was also just gonna add, I would, I, I'm concerned about, very concerned about viewing it as a pilot project because given how tight funding is right now, I, I wouldn't want to create an expectation. I mean, this is two-thirds grant money, one-third council money as is proposed. There's no way that could be replicated at other schools unless there were grant, there was grant money available and I would not, you know, why do you pick Glorietta? Why do you start there? It, it just seems to me like it's a hundred thousand dollar, two problems. One, to me, creating an expectation at the other three elementary schools or maybe even OIS that they would get this same expenditure is, is something that I would be concerned about and also issues of fairness there. And number two, it's still a hundred thousand dollars, right? It's still a pretty sizable outlay that could go towards other uses, so.
May I, it, question though.
Yeah.
What if it was a pilot project for not having crossing guards? Because then we would have a really good data set of crossing guards, crossing guards. We would even have crossing guards. And then we'd get it in, we don't, and we've got a really good statistical sample to maybe not be beholden to operating costs. I just thought I'd throw that out there. That, that would be money well spent.
I, I, I feel like I have to comment. I mean, literally that intersection is a half a block from my house. I see that intersection nineteen times a day. I walk through the neighborhood endlessly. Um, in all honesty, from a safety standpoint, and believe me, I, I would hardly ever bet on humans versus something else. But I actually think from a safety standpoint, I'd want the crossing guards. Um, but I will tell you that yes, indeed, while people show up there to play soccer and people are always bouncing basketballs around and, you know, running their dogs around where they're not supposed to and everything else. The reality is, is that whole area when it's not school is really dead.
I mean, it's calm.
There is hardly any, you know, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on Glorietta, but you know, I, like I said, I see that intersection endlessly and I can honestly say that in living there for over thirty years, I have never seen anyone run that stop sign. I'm never, you know, I just, I, I don't consider it to be really worrisome. It would be the last place I would worry, one of the last places I would worry about, you know, safety. I just, and I, and I agree with the vice mayor. The reality is, is at dead times when it's not school, people are just crossing wherever they're crossing anyway, so.
Okay, well, I just, that's a good question. Um, any other discussion points?
Well, one other question I had was about fire hydrants and I, I, it's not currently on the CIP at all. And I don't know if it's something that we could find grant funding to look at. I know it's something that we looked at maybe ten years ago or so. But it just seems like, given the current concern about fire in our community, and I understand that hydrants are not intended to fight a wildfire, but um, I think in the event of a fire, finding a hydrant dry would make people pretty upset or with low pressure so that it couldn't act adequately fight the fire. So I don't know if there's, if, if that really is a, a city responsibility, if there's some way to add it on to the CIP so that it's something we could figure out whether we could fund.
Um, I'm looking at our city manager and wondering if this is something.
So, um, all the questions I anticipated, that wasn't one of the questions that I anticipated tonight. That's okay. Um, and I would need to better understand the relationship between, uh, the water agency, uh, the responsibilities of MOFD and what the responsibilities of the city are before I would make any recommendation to include or not include something in the CIP program. So if you'll give me a little bit of time, I, I could report back and provide some additional context to that request.
Thank you. And certainly if it is an area, it's something that we could, you know, to the extent we're trying to advocate for additional funding as we've been talking about, it's, it's something top of mind.
And, and others that have lived here a long time probably remember, I, I can't remember what the exact format of it was, whether it was intended to be what kind of a tax it was, but there was a moment in time, if you want to go back and look, that the community did, or we did look at, um, a fire flow tax.
I, I, I'm, all of this sounds very familiar, but I feel like we're talking it with like without the right data in front of us. And I feel like given that we've got seven minutes left in the meeting, this should come back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, go back, go back and look at what that was.
Yeah, I have some, I have some old data from nineteen ninety and I'll, I'll try to create a historical record.
The community actually turned it down at that point.
Yes.
I have one, one question relating to the budget, which is, so we got a lot and lot of comments about pickleball.
Yes.
In response to, because, uh, and, um, so I don't, based on the comments, I don't believe that there's any changes that need to be made to the proposed CIP, but it is something that we are keeping an eye on and, and I would like to see brought back at, you know, a later time since we had so much public comment about it.
And there was something about restriping that I wasn't, I'm not a pickleball player, so I don't know.
I don't want to get into discussion of all the, all the comments because it extended beyond the financial allocation to, you know, yeah, stripes on the courts and whether which court could be dedicated and temporarily solutions versus, you know, there are all these issues that we, I don't want to spend time discussing. It's a little outside the scope of the presentation, but maybe it could come back.
We could definitely do that. Um, and then I saw the, uh, series of comments that was, was received by the city council and some of them related to striping. I'll try to work with Todd to see if we can sort of figure out where that's coming from and what the confusion might be around that.
I guess could we just, as a direction, because the, the book says that that's a design cost for a location. If we could just make that more of a general earmark um, for a pickleball solution and then it's done, that would be my advice.
Okay, we will make.
I think that's a good point.
Um, I have a question to the infrastructure subcommittee. I'm not privy to your ongoing project list and I didn't know if you feel that you need uh, some sort of allowance, uh, for any soft cost, design cost, any, anything that you anticipate bringing to the council. I know it's premature, but the question is just would a reserve or an allowance be appropriate?
I think it would. I think it would come to, back to the council, frankly.
Super, okay.
Okay, um, any other discussion other than really, uh, congratulations and lots of gratitude for putting together a very thorough explanatory project?
I just wanted to mention to the group that I had a, a comment to the city manager that my, those last three or four pages in the back of the book were my favorite part. Ask, ask, yeah, how do we get this moving? So, um, I had just asked her to think about um, a process where we can even have those conversations. I get that a lot of them are nebulous, premature, not right, but how do they ever get right? And so I just asked the city manager to get back to us with how anything gets out of page one hundred and twelve. page 112. So anyway.
Well put. FYI.
Money, no.
Money, grant opportunities, those are two ways, but we can certainly talk about internally with the team, talk about a way we can daylight opportunities or provide you an opportunities earlier in the process to weigh in on that and then talk internally about the project, the call for projects for the year.
Okay. Then may I close item H2? Thank you, Director Christie, and I suspect everyone else on your staff and city manager.
Lots of thanks to go around for Scott and Seva and his team for putting together the CIP document as well.
I know that we have, that takes us to council members' reports. We have two more minutes. Does anyone have a council member report? Okay. I'll wait till the next meeting. City manager's report.
May 17th is the wildfire preparedness fair and we're getting a good turnout. State Farm will be at the, at the, at the fair, so.
Wow.
Bring your questions. That poor agent.
We did have a fabulous community meeting last week. We had 200 people in attendance, I think. Chief Rossi presented, Chief Isaacs, our city manager, Councilmember G and I were in attendance. A resident, Stacy Crinkes, helped facilitate and it was, it was thoughtful and in, people were curious and inquisitive, it was truly great. I did have, I don't know if there's, I did have item K's matters initiated, I did have one matter initiated that I want to raise, which is June is Pride Month and I believe we will have a proclamation at one of our meetings, but in addition to that, we typically, or we would be raising a flag. Pride flag is something that we've done or, and other communities do, and so I'd like to put that on the agenda because I believe it would now need approval. So that is my motion to, raising of the flag will be on a future agenda as a matters initiated. Because we have a, a internal policy, I believe?
I established an internal administrative policy that any commemorative flags that are displayed on outdoor will need to be adopted by the city council as a body so that it constitutes your government's speech.
Okay, so you need a second.
I need a second, so.
I'll second it.
To the council, okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that comes to a future meeting. Any other matters initiated with very few seconds to spare? Okay, in that case, this meeting will be adjourned and the next meeting, do I have a motion actually in a second to adjourn, I'm sorry? Motion adjourned, okay. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. The meeting is adjourned to this special meeting on May 7th, tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Our Tri-Cities meeting. We're here.